Well, let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. If you all please stand, we'll honor our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And I do represent the United States with my nation under God and in the business of the Constitution of America.
Well, everybody, welcome tonight. We have a few trustees that still haven't joined us, but they said they'll be joining us here shortly. Jim, you there?
Yes, I am.
All right. Well, I missed you. I didn't see that big J. I guess that was...
I should have came up a picture here, I hope, but...
Okay. Well, then, we're just missing Mr. Turley. Um, we have a visitor to announce, Ms. Mary Trent, and she'll present to us our insurance. So, we'll see you in a few minutes. So, um, we, at the first of our meeting, we always read the college mission statement. So, Dot C Community College provides a student-centered learning environment where students can achieve their educational, personal, and career goals. And if there's any remarks from the audience, we would welcome the, uh, any members of the community to address the trustees at this time. Seeing none or hearing none, we'll move on. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes to approve. They're in your book. All entertain a motion to approve when ready. Take that as my motion.
I move to approve both sets of minutes.
I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes. And I have a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, oh, sorry. Opposed, same sign? Okay. Motion carried. I will slow down on the motions next time. And I'm likely to forget as well. Uh, completion of the agenda. So, we have any additions or, uh, adjustments to the agenda as presented?
I'd like to take some things off the consent agenda for discussion.
So...
Items, uh, five through 10, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Uh, which, which category? Business?
Uh, yes, business.
So, in business, item five?
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. Just have some questions.
Six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So, those will move off.
And under personnel, uh, two, four, five, six, seven.
Two, and what?
Four, five, six, seven.
Two, four, five, six, seven. Okay. Does any of the, Glenn, does any of these need to be in executive session?
I suppose it's in a one discussion.
Yeah, so we'll have to keep, keep it somewhat limited in our discussion. So, we'll put it in regular agenda, and then if it delves into different areas, we'll have to put it into executive session. Okay. Any other changes to the agenda as presented? Do I have a motion to approve, uh, the agenda as amended? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same, the same sign? There's Mr. Turley. Thanks for joining us. Okay, all right. So, now we'll move on to, uh, reports. So, trustee reports, uh, we'll start with you, Mr. Turley.
Uh, I don't have anything, well, I guess I do. Uh, I've been working with Coach Ripple and, uh, Coach Kuhn about, uh, doing some refreshing to the weight room. And, uh, we're trying to get some numbers together, get some private funding to, uh, maybe get some new flooring and some new paint. Uh, we've ordered some, uh, weight benches for them and, uh, got a few other things online, but, uh, we're gonna try to freshen it up a little bit, so that's what I've got going.
All right. Thank you, Bill. How about Jim? Jim?
Uh, hey, something to add to that, Bill. The YMCA just got approved for all new weights, and I thought it might be something that we could look at, maybe they're replacing all their equipment.
Oh, okay.
We could use there, so, uh, I don't know for sure who to tell you to get ahold of, but, uh, it could be...
I'll call them tomorrow.
Okay. No, I, um, I had my first higher education, whatever that name of that long board is, is on. It was very...
Higher education.
What's that?
Future of higher education.
Future of higher education and learn some things, and, uh, I think it's gonna be really helpful to help educate myself and help, uh, keep, uh, Dot C Community College, you know, maybe ahead of, uh, a few of the others on what's, uh, going on and some ideas. So, uh, one of the things I mentioned in the work session yesterday was to try to work with, uh, Jane to come out and come up with a course number that would be labeled so that everybody knows that course is transferable to one of the institutions here inside Kansas. So, uh, probably one of the many things I got out of it. So, uh, that's kind of my report.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Maya?
I don't have a report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Kathy?
I went through the K H C C T meeting board, attended by Zoom, along with Dr. Forte, and there, there's just a lot of changes that are happening at all the various colleges and concerns on how schools start. Nothing, everything's up in the air, so whatever we plan now, it'll probably change. But I think we've got a good foot in the door with what we have planned.
Is that it? Sure.
I've been home.
Okay. Kelly?
Uh, not much. I had one of my patients call me and said he had, uh, had some concern with some of the property that the Community College used to own, uh, out by Coke Industries, we do not, no longer own, uh, but by the time I got him called back, he said Dr. Tatro had called him and informed him that we had gotten, uh, we did no longer had that, uh, that property out there, and he was concerned about the weeds growing, our sign being out there reflecting on our Dot City Community College sign having weeds and tall grass growing around it, and Dr. Tatro had taken care of it, and he was very satisfied. I enjoyed talking to him.
Good.
Appreciate you taking care of that.
You gotta get her signed, Dan. Dan?
I've had a number of conversations with, uh, former students and, uh, young people I know who attend here and attend other colleges, uh, in Kansas, and they're all saying about the same thing. They're not a hundred percent sure what the colleges are gonna do. Uh, I think Fort Hayes has something pretty well lined out, but again, things could change pretty quickly, so they, but they're gonna deliver in a stretch in a, a three-pronged way, you know, so I, uh, I don't think we're behind or ahead of anybody in that regard.
Uh, we're adapting like everybody else and staying what we can and allowed to do. So, I really don't have anything more, uh, Dr. Nolte?
Well, I just want to say thank y'all for yesterday. Uh, it was very informative. Got some things taken off the agenda there for you guys, and so just wanted to thank y'all. It was a very good meeting yesterday and, and, uh, got some things taken off and some things done, and we'll be meeting again on the 30th. By the way, just, fun keeps happening. So, uh, we'll be meeting on the 30th, but there's just some things that, uh, and I'm, I'm glad you, y'all, retroceded your, your things and looked at that stuff, and so we'll, uh, we'll get some more information, whether it be, you know, whether it be with the buildings or the library or other things like that. So, we, uh, we did, I kept, I kept Carla busy this morning, so, uh, we're doing some of those things. Anyway, things, things are going well at the college. Uh, it really hasn't stopped here, hasn't stopped at all. I mean, we're still nice to see everybody back, and we're pretty much all back. Our C D, you know, our CDC is open and all, all is well there. Uh, we're working pretty hard, and I hope that Glenn is working on the, the numbers, and we're hearing from certain, you know, certain other colleges what their numbers look like. Uh, we're up, so that's a good, that's a good point. We, we are up, and, uh, we have, uh, athletes coming back on the 28th, 28th, and then that's our, that's our sophomores, our sophomore football players. And on the 5th, we have our freshmen coming in, and so, uh, talked to the cheer coach today. Things are going well. All, all, all looks good. We, you know, we've got some, we've got, we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens. I know every week that COVID meets and talks, right, Kristy? And so, uh, we, uh, had, had my first chamber meeting today after, after three months of not having, you know, not being, seeing face to face, and, uh, Dr. Trotter and others were there, and so it was, it was a good meeting. But things are, uh, things are moving on, and matter of fact, the chamber, uh, just that their numbers are also up as far as, uh, people going ahead and staying with it and that kind of thing. And so, we have our meetings, and thank you, Kathy, for making that meeting on last Saturday, or like two Saturdays ago, and, uh, sounded like it was pretty interesting reading, so lots to, lots to figure out. So, this is a whole, it's, it's kinda like reset in this old world, like reset. I mean, it, it's amazing what you, what you're used to, yet, yesterday is not what you're gonna be used to tomorrow.
That is true, sure. And that's, I think that's reflected in, in our agenda.
It is.
And as a result of the work session yesterday. And things are different, things are changing, and, uh, I think it's prudent that certain things we slow down and make sure we have our arms around. Sure that we're financially solid, and there's a lot of uncertainty out there, and I think, uh, the approach here is, is good and prudent, so thank you for modifying the agendas for tonight's business.
Okay. With that, uh, we'll move on to the reports. So, Kristy, you have the floor.
I'm not sure the best place to stand was the owl, so I'll just sit here so I can kinda scroll through.
Okay, can everybody hear well?
Yeah.
Okay. Online, you can hear well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Well, um, after our last board meeting, um, Dr. Nolte and I were talking about how there has been some changes in our board of trustees and obviously with new board members in January. One opportunity we didn't really have was to give just kind of a, a background on how we handle some of our personnel things here at the college and how we function as an HR department. Obviously, we're different than the world of agriculture, the world of automotive, different than a physician or anything of that sort, so we have our own way of doing things, our own policies and procedures, so, um, I'll try not to brie too much. I know HR is not the most exciting topic to talk about, but I just wanted to go over a few things, um, starting with our organizational chart. So, in front of you all is a black binder. My goal was this, was just kind of to make a, a tool for all of you. This isn't something you have to bring to the board meetings if you would like to, you're more than welcome to. Um, oftentimes, you might have questions and maybe you don't know who to direct that question to, or who's over that area, or who might be responsible for something. Um, additionally, I might present to you an exception to board policy like I did last month on vacation rollover, or this month, obviously, I'm proposing a couple of changes to our vacation policy. So, I just wanted you to have the personnel-related board policies readily available. So, trustee Ripper asked me if this evening we were gonna go through all those policies, you know? That was a just a tool. I promise, I know it's very easy to get home. Um, eventually, though, we are progressively going through them. So, obviously, for starters, vacation policy is first and foremost. Um, as we're moving to ADP, there's some, a lot of opportunity for some growth there and some positive changes, so that's why you have that this month. Next, I'd like to focus on our IT and social media. We had great meetings about that forever ago, and it's time to update those, and so now you just have it readily available. Um, so if you guys wanna look at the first page of our org chart, I'm not gonna go, uh, too much into detail about it. Yeah, I'm not gonna go position by position, but I just wanted everyone to kinda have an overview. So, this is the overview with proposed changes this evening. Obviously, if certain personnel, um, items go a different direction, then I will provide you with brand-new org charts as fast as I can, definitely by the June 30th meeting. But this is the proposed organizational chart that's before you all this evening, um, and so you can kinda see where it trickles down. Obviously, we report to the taxpayers of Ford County, um, our board of trustee, obviously the voters of Kansas, and we go down. We have four vice presidents here at the college. There's a proposed addition of three assistant vice presidents potentially, and then we go down into our director positions and slow downward. Um, obviously, then faculty members, the division chairs, our treat is very similar to that of a director here on campus, and then so they're equal with that. Does anybody have questions on like the overview? I'll go into each particular department as well.
So, Kristy, so HR is under which?
Yeah. So, currently, so this is a proposed one. So, this is with the personnel items that were on the agenda this evening. Currently, so now I'm reflecting on this, currently, human resources right now is directly to the president, and that is HR and payroll are under my area. Additionally, the other directors that report to the president would be Director of Enrollment Management and Marketing, which is Andrea Hall, Athletic Director Jake, and, um, Foundation Director Chris Hazelworth. What you're looking at is proposed changes then under our new Vice President Student Affairs for Enrollment Management and Marketing to be pivoted under our Vice President Student Affairs where it was previously, um, and then for HR and payroll to go under Administration and Finance, again, pending those personnel changes, given that all be working with the budget more personally. Any other questions? Okay. So, then on the next slide is just a closer view into our academic affairs. Um, so obviously, our Vice President Academic Affairs, Dr. Huarda, reports directly to the president, and we've worked down. She does have an executive assistant and an academic affairs coordinator, Charlene Figur, who she's kinda one of those people who has like a lot of those odd jobs here and there, that she's picked up a lot of things. She has a great job. But, um, so she helps us out with like faculty placement skills or other items when Glenn and Dr. Huarda need it for negotiation. Um, also under Dr. Huarda then is all of the academic faculty, so obviously, division chairs report most directly to her. However, if you know Dr. Huarda, she meets with all of her faculty regularly. Um, and, uh, she is also over, um, the Student Achievement and Resource Center, our Tutoring Center, or otherwise known as the SARC, and Title V, which, again, there's a personal item, personnel item on your agenda this evening, where the SARC and Title V will be merging together under Dr. Huarda, and so there will be the Program Manager and the Director of the SARC slash Title V Connections Center will be in the same area. So, any questions on academ, oh, I'm sorry, and of course, the library. The Learning Resource Center is also under Academic Affairs. Uh, under Workforce Development, very similar to Academic Affairs. This is all of the workforce-related, um, faculty members, division chairs, our allied health, cosmetology, things of that sort. Currently, uh, Dr. Tatro has an executive assistant. We've obviously talked about the training, we also could grow with a tech recruiter or advisor, things of that sort, but right now, as it stands, these are, this is hip department. Uh, in Student Affairs, Student Affairs has a wide variety of departments, so we've got financial aid, security, residence life, our records and registrar, uh, I can't read that far, and I can't, but a lot of different ones.
Counseling.
Counseling, thank you, I couldn't read that one. And counseling as well. So, it's kind of a wide variety in there, and then like I said, this is including Director of Enrollment and Marketing under the Vice President Student Affairs pending approval this evening, or I'm sorry, that's pending approval when we hire a vice president. Um, then under Administration and Finance, again, um, pending personnel approvals or not, I can get you an updated one, but currently, um, this would be Dr. Forte's area, so he is over everything related to the business office, our food services, our facilities in operation, um, our child development center, and then everything related to potentially then human resources, payroll, and the business services, which would include accounts payable, accounts receivable, the bookstore, the mailroom, the copy room, and then there is one grant to underfinance, um, and administration is the RSCP. And then obviously athletics. Um, again, Jacob Ripple, he reports directly to the president, uh, and then underneath him are the coach, our head coaches and then assistant coaches. He, we also have an athletic training staff, sports information director, and a assistant athletic director, compliance coordinator.
So, you have, underneath your workforce, you have rodeo.
So, rodeo, let me go back to that. Rodeo was previously under athletics. Uh, when we, when Dr. Tatro joined our team, uh, his, Dr. Rupi, Jake, and Dr. Tatro felt that his skills and background were a little bit more equipped to handle rodeo, and so he, he's been over rodeo, I think, since he started. We kinda pivoted that over there.
But you still have it under athletics.
Did I really? Oh, I'm so sorry. It is, it is on the workforce side. My apologies, I'll get that fixed for you. No problem.
Good catch. Do you know with Winters, with Winters Ranch and livestock, it'd be a good parallel with the workforce, one more, yes.
Uh, then for our flight program in Arizona, we have Dr. John as our provost, and underneath him, he does have a VA coordinator, a student services coordinator, and then all of the flight agents who report directly to him. And that is kinda all the organizational charts. What, um, what questions can I answer? I know it runs through kind of fast, but I didn't think you wanted to go into further than that.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, when we were elected to the board, we were given a staff directory, and I'm sure that will be updated as we get ready to go into the new year. Will those people's, uh, title be listed the same as on their flow chart? So, if we wanted to see, we look at the flow chart, we wanna see that person under personnel, we could find out where they fit in and match?
Yeah, that's a great question. First, also, once I get it finalized after this evening, these will all be updated on the website right away. Um, often it's great at getting them done, and so the org chart will be there. Do you wanna type up a directory? Or maybe Mike would know better. I don't know how it searches for the title.
You can...
The directory on the website?
Mm-hmm.
You can search by title or by...
Yeah, you can search by title, yeah. Anything in the title, any word.
Key words in it would show...
What needs to be finalized tonight?
Um, oh, nothing. This is just, I'm just presenting it to you all, and then obviously sending the personnel items, um, this evening and probably on the 30th. Some of these might adjust, and I'll be happy to replace your copies.
Okay. Or the first readings and second readings of the policies that we were looking at.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Will we be adding HVAC and electrical to this workforce development page?
Yeah.
And who is, uh, who's the workforce division chair?
Jeff Cole, I believe.
Jeff Cole.
Jeff Cole, our D E O instructor. And the other question is about the organizational chart. Then, um, other than that, I just have a couple more things. I wanted to take the opportunity, like I said, to just kinda go through how our hiring process works here at the college. Again, it is still very different, um, from industry to industry. We do have, um, our own unique set of hoops that we go through in our processes, so, um, obviously, we always start with a vacant position or a new position. As you're all aware, new positions, if we don't have it in our books currently, we do present that to you all for approval to even establish the position first. Um, from there, once we have that approval and/or a vacant position, we'll start the advertising process. So, we do have a very in-depth approval process, a checks and balance system, before we can even advertise a position. Currently, it's on our NeoGo system, which is where we do all of our advertising and our employment applications. That is going to transition to ADP, which will have a similar setup and the same approval process. So, before you can even advertise for a position, we're gonna do an evaluation of whether we need that position. Obviously, with the uncertainties of COVID-19 right now, that's a very serious step. We're evaluating which positions are gonna be essential to the future and which maybe, um, aren't necessary in the budget. Um, but once we kinda do that evaluation, the supervisor in ADP will be able to send me a request, hey, I would really like to fill this position. I then will take on the task of the verification, and then it will move the approvals on. So, it starts with the supervisor, um, it's gonna go to the business office, make sure that the budget line is correct, there are funds in that account. It's gonna go to Dr. Forte. He approves every position, as does Dr. Nolte. Again, approve that we have the finances, approve that's an investment we wanted to college. Um, Dr. Nolte is gonna approve whether or not he feels that that is a staffing decision he wants to make for the college. And then I'm just the final approval, just to approve that everybody else approves, and then I can advertise the position. And so, those checks and balances do go into that. Um, before I post a salary or before I even present it to our administrative team, I conduct a market survey. Um, I, every year, I put out a, um, uh, open records request. I haven't done it yet this year, that's on my desk to do. Um, I'll do 443 to county and the city, just so we know where we compare to them, and so I'll get those done very soon. So, that type of market survey, so we know where we're landing on salaries, whether we're competitive, maybe we're overcharged, you know, we're overselling, things of that sort. Maybe the position we're in dire need and we'd like to be competitive, so we do a market survey. And then once it's advertised, then we'll create a screening committee for almost all of our physicians here on campus. And once you have that screening committee, they can review and rate applicants online, um, electronically without having to meet. And so, when they rate them, then I can get a rating of a composite score, like who are the top three candidates or top five. Some cases for faculty were known to take top six or top eight to go ahead and interview, at least on a first-round basis. So, um, the committees get together, uh, will conduct the interviews, and then the committee makes a recommendation to whoever the committee chair is. So, for example, faculty is probably gonna be Dr. Huarda. If it's an admission, it would be Andrea Hall, and then they can present that to the president. So, all staffing decisions then get a final approval by Dr. Nolte, and then you see at the bottom, there are three different kind of levels, once it gets from their program technical or salaried employees, those that are traditionally exempt from overtime. Um, in our current board policy, that reads that I present that to the board of trustees for approval. So, that's what you guys see monthly in the personnel and the consent, consent agenda is those program technical employees. Also presented to the board then is gonna be the faculty. We get a letter of acceptance from them, that Dr. Huarda and or Dr. Tatro will sign, and then I present that to you. So, and again, on the consideration forms, you as board members get to read their credentials, their backgrounds, their experiences, um, and why, why we selected that candidate. Uh, if it is a classified employee or an hourly employee, they do not get presented to the board of trustees. Um, they are actually, we have something, it's called a pink sheet, which I, everybody jokes, I should call it a green sheet or something, because it, I mean, has a different connotation. So, um, but we have a sheet that goes through the same approval process. They have to approve the same, the CFO, the president, they all have to approve that salary, that position, that pay rate. Um, and so it is a lengthy process, and then eventually, I get them back and we do onboarding and training. So, all of our physician officers here at the college, they are contingent upon a background screening, a drug screening, and then obviously, the faculty or program technical is contingent upon the approval by the board of trustees. And so, we do all of those checks before their start date. So, that is in a nutshell, a somewhat lengthy hiring procedure. I hope I kinda broke it down simple enough, but what questions can I answer?
I have one on the background check. How extensive do we do those in light of all the lawsuits that are out there as far as in situations being with a bunch of eighteen to twenty-year-old kids and stuff like that? Um, you know, do we K B I background checks, or are we, how, how extensive are those?
Yeah, that's a really great question, 'cause especially, we do, we have minors on our campus as well, if they're high school students.
Right.
Um, we definitely do take that very seriously. So, we use, which is actually here in a, actually, let me just go through. So, this is the vendors that I work with on a daily basis, so you'll see Capital Branch is our, um, they're our background screening, um, company that we go through, and so with them, we do criminal background, we do accounting background, we do, um, social security alert, resident history, motor vehicle, and then depending on the employee's position, we might add in like a credit check and things of that sort. For example, a CFO, you're gonna wanna do a credit check and things of that sort. We also do annual motor vehicle, um, checks on all of our employees that kinda qualify in there. We're not gonna do everybody if they don't drive a, a vehicle, but everybody that does, actually, Mary, sorry, Mary does, because I submit my list to her all the time, but, um, so we do an annual motor vehicle report of all those employees, you know, just to make sure that our staff and faculty that are representing us in our fleet vehicles, that they're doing that properly. Also, you'll notice on all of our job descriptions, it's actually a required qualification here at the college, that you have the ability, you must obtain and maintain a valid Kansas driver's license, which throws people kind of off, but as Mary knows, that's part of our insurance, and it is a requirement, so we check that as well. Um, but, and then other departments, they have special background checks. They're actually, I think trustee Ramsey were asking me, um, in the work session yesterday, you know, what about allied health? Allied health, they have extensive background checks as well, that the director of allied health, she does separately from mine. Um, same with the Child Development Center, they have a lot of regulations and guidelines, and so the director of the CDC, she runs hers while I also run mine. We run them separate, basically. So, great question.
It's pretty extensive. We've, we've, we've come, for y'all to know, for the board to know, we've come a long way. I think Maya and I were having that little conversation this afternoon a little bit about how far we've come in, in our, in our HR. about how far we've come in, in our, in our HR. HR is a very serious, serious situation, as you all know. I mean, you can, you can really, you can hurt yourself pretty quickly if your HR department's not working well. And so, I know we've, uh, there's been a lot of things go through in HR, and so we're cleaning all that up. Thanks, Christie, for what she does.
We also, for drug screening, we go through technology too here in Doc City, but we also use, um, a national site, which has been really beneficial, so that we can get them screened where they're at. So rather than waiting till their start date when they move here and then hoping, fingers crossed, everything's okay, you know, we can actually screen them where they're at, if that's like the closest location to them, which is extremely helpful.
Do they sign contracts where they, if they're asked to volunteer for, um, just a drug test randomly, they, they, that's in the contract?
Actually, it's in, um, one of the board policies in your binder, um, I can't name the number off the top of my head. I promise I'm not that good. But, um, in there, the drug screening policy does outline the stipulations. So we do reasonable suspicion, we do pre-employment. Currently, um, I'm not sure if the policy addresses whether or not we can do random. Currently, we are not necessarily conducting random. We do do reasonable suspicion though, so like, uh, it's in our work comp policy, you know, if there's a major work comp claim, you know, first thing is a drug screening or things of that sort. And we do have them sign a sample consent that goes in their onboarding paperwork. Yeah, giving us the consent for reasonable suspicion.
All right, thank you.
Josh has been known to take to the drug testing ride.
Josh and I have had a couple rides and we're great coworkers.
Okay.
The other question.
Christie, I might have more of a comment. And this, this is just kind of, you know, ties into what I see happen in the rest of the world and industry about what they're doing. And I'll ask Jim to either concur or, or, or not, he's, he's a sizable employer and I'm, I'm sure he's seeing the same thing that other businesses are. And that's the elevation of their HR department to more integral parts of the operation. And this is prior to COVID. This is just the way the world's been changing about the need for very vigorous, uh, HR departments in reflecting, uh, the new employee and the needs they have and changing payroll structures so they're more competitive in the marketplace. So many things are changing, like I said, prior to COVID-19, that, that your HR departments are becoming integral parts of the operation. I, Jim, are you seeing the same thing?
Yes, I, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, it's a very important position in our business today and, uh, you know, just the background checks, the insurance that comes with it, and then the health is becoming such a major expense. Of course, our HR handles that, uh, department too, that it's, uh, you know, you've got to have some really, really quality people. But, uh, the good deal doing the background check, Christie, is, you know, each year on the driving deal is, you know, we just got to make sure we react if we do come up with a problem, because, uh, some of the kind of things that can get us in trouble as an employer is if we know somebody's had a problem and we don't do anything about it. So, uh, just.
Absolutely. Absolutely. What we do internally is if we are notified, which the past year, like there, I think there were about two incidences, uh, we do remove them from our fleet vehicle list. That's just kind of proactive. Justin Herter and I have a Google Doc and they just get a real, like, red highlighted on their, on their road and make any kind of vehicle and go further notice. So sometimes that comes out before the motor vehicle report, sometimes it'll self-report, or there's been instances where we've had sheriff reports come across our desk. So we do respond to those rapidly, but otherwise, the annual motor vehicles average live, so we're actually getting ready to get those done right now. I'm trying to get through with enrollment and then that'll be next.
One of the things that I appreciate is when we do reference checks, and it seems like a small thing, but we've found out that a lot of colleges hire, uh, professors without checking with us.
They've got to reverse.
On reference checks, so.
I don't know.
I'm glad we checked the reference.
And actually, um, Dr. Pedro has a great idea as well. He, if he can call with our references for candidates. Here's the, here's the fee, that takes me a little bit of time, and I think that was beneficial, and so that's something I might have thirty supervisors do as well. There's no reason not to. It's going to be your employee, and if I provide the tools and the template, why should you not get to hear about what you're, what kind of person you might be hiring?
And there's very few things that are more important than the acquisition and retention of talent.
Thank you, Gary. I couldn't agree more.
I called a K E S instructor today that I asked her to please come back. She did a really good job and then her, her parents got ill. And then, uh, but she did an absolutely wonderful job and, uh, I said, we'd love to have you back, so we'll see what happens.
So the, I'll just move on then, last slide, so we can get on, I mean, I know everybody has things on, so I'll start my session. Thank you. Um, so this is just the last slide, and this is just kind of more informational than anything else. I wanted, um, all of you to just kind of be aware of some of the vendors that we work with. So in HR and the payroll department, we're the plan administrators for all of these programs up here. So for medical insurance, as you all know, we're partially self-insured, and so I'm the chair of our, actually, I didn't include that on my committee, um, Dr. Forty-nine, or I think Dr. Forty's chair of the health insurance committee, and then I'm right there with them. And so we have EBMS and APLOC is our supplemental insurance. Um, then as far as retirement, we have CAPERS. We also have our 403B option, um, which you'll learn in your four policies. For those of you that don't know, we offer a really great benefit to our employees. Once you work here for twelve full months as a full-time employee, you can open up a 403B and we'll match you dollar for dollar up to fifteen hundred dollars a year, such as kind of an added benefit that we administer. Like I said, the drug screening, the background screening, um, for employee records, right now, we're using ten o'clock plus and ginza bar. As you all know, we'll be getting rid of that very soon when we go to ADP, the first payroll in ADP is July, by the way. So we're getting really excited, we have a lot to get done still. Um, and then workers comp, we work through accident fund, uh, short-term stability, we go through sunlight financials. So then in addition, all of those, um, those cool points up there, that's kind of the reporting that we do, just a very short list, just in overall, obviously, there's quarterly and annual reports in there in more detail. And then one thing I'm extremely proud of my department and my team personally is we are very active in committees on campus. And so I just wanted to list in there. So our payroll supervisor, she's one of the co-chairs of the ERC, which is our employee recognition committee. Um, I chair a few different committees up there, um, and a couple of other things. So we're very involved. I'm, I'm excited for the PIO, hopefully, to be hired soon, so I can, um, share with them the Hall of Fame. That will save me a little bit of time, but, um, but other than that, I'm excited to participate in these committees. So we do meet as a COVID committee, just this, you know, next two, maybe we meet weekly, every Friday at ten. Our theme the last two weeks has really been students. Um, as you all know, moving for football, it's this Sunday, it's the twenty eighth. Is that this Sunday?
Yes.
Is my day off? Okay, it is this Sunday. So the big topic has been what is our student protocol and things of that sort. So what we've done is we've made two subcommittees, the faculty subcommittee, which Dr. Horta chairs, um, and then we have a sub-student committee, which Jake, R A D, and then Gail Rodber, our director of counseling, they kind of co-share. So if anybody would like a COVID update, that's kind of the last of my reports, so I can turn it over, maybe if you want to start the student report.
So for the student report, and Gaila can weigh in on this as well, we've been, um, basically trying to gather information from every area of the student experience. Obviously, Dr. Hora has been putting together, uh, the faculty piece and loading that into how we're going to handle students in the classroom. Um, Margarita Morales has given some, uh, guidance on the residence halls and how we're going to handle that. And, um, mine seems to be ever-changing at this point. I feel like I get an update about every three hours on athletic procedures, um, but we've loaded some stuff in there and, and, uh, I, as I told Chris right before the meeting, we, I loaded, uh, I gave Gaila a bunch of stuff to load into that document and, um, today I got an update and with an excellent document from the California Community Colleges, uh, on some educational pieces for it. In addition to that, um, I am going to meet with, uh, Dr. Trotter Thursday morning to go over, uh, some ideas on, on how. We've laid out our, our plan with the best practices in mind from what we're seeing other places, uh, shared with multiple athletic directors, um, kept an eye on what the KDHE is saying as well. Um, but in the end, uh, you know, I feel like I need some input from Dr. Trotter on exact, uh, processes. And so I am meeting with him Thursday morning to go over some exact processes. And we're actually talking about, uh, possibly, uh, testing all of our student athletes as they come in. And, uh, we initially were talking about maybe just the ones that were coming from a quarantined area, but now we're talking about possibly testing every single one of them as they come in.
But Dr. Trotter wants you to make sure that when they get tested, they're not from Ford County, they are from where they're.
Yes, yes.
Does that make sense?
We don't want it to affect our numbers.
Yeah, we don't want numbers in Ford County to go up.
Yes, we don't want it to affect our numbers.
They had it when it came to this.
Our numbers are single digits right now, so.
Yes. So, um, so we're going to, we're going to discuss all of that Thursday morning and try to, try to get through on an exact process of, of bringing them in. Gaila, anything else you'd like to add to that?
Uh, no, just been lots and lots of conversations and, um, like you said, there's a lot of documents out there and we're trying to keep them together to make them fit for. And for, you, you, your group has been a lot.
I'd be happy to, to talk at least about that. I did, uh, provided my board reports this month, I think a seven-page document. Um, so for a recap, uh, the faculty group has been meeting weekly for about three or four weeks now, and it's a membership of about twenty to twenty-five, which varies, those who attend. Dr. Tetro attends regularly and we appreciate that. Uh, we also have the instructional support offices, Jorge Australia and some of his staff from the Sark attend, Dr. Roberts and some of his staff from Trio attend. Uh, division chairs are attending regularly, and then any faculty member who's expressed an interest in participating in these Zoom meetings is welcome to attend as well. But then the last couple of weeks, we started developing the document that's shared in your packet. Um, the faculty are, are adopting the Hi-Flex delivery system, which will function much like this, uh, where there will be people in a room with an instructor and others participating remotely through Zoom or some other video platform. Uh, we're beginning to work out more of the logistics, so for those who are attending in class, what will the social distancing look like, how will it be organized as to who's attending in person and who's attending remotely? Uh, to figure that out, uh, we're coming to the consensus that faculty will need to contact students in advance of the class start, perhaps survey, find out who needs to participate remotely, who wants to and is able to attend in person, and then develop schedules for that as well. Um, we do anticipate that throughout the semester, uh, who can attend in person will change. And so this model, uh, will help us meet the needs of those students. The classes will be delivered synchronously, so at a scheduled time on specific days. Uh, faculty, some are planning to record, uh, the Zoom meetings for students who, for whatever reason, as they would in a traditional setting, uh, need to meet class. Uh, we're working also on syllabus components, so asking faculty to explain within their syllabus, for instance, and on their course pages, uh, what their expectations are for attendance and participation. And we are also wanting and needing, uh, some institutional, uh, direction on, uh, what to do when a student identifies as being diagnosed or needs to stay home, uh, what will be the impact on the other students and faculty within that classroom environment. And so I think the student group is also looking at that as well. Did meet with Mike Webster and his staff this afternoon, with some of my staff, and with Teresa Tate from, uh, from Title V, uh, to assess the technology needs that we have. Mentioned that we need soundbars and, uh, cameras in most, all of our classrooms. Uh, we did find that for the second summer session, we only need like, what, five or six, was it, Mike? Uh, and then for the fall, a few more beyond that, so we're trying to, to phase this in. Uh, don't have currently, it appears, much need for panels, projections or screens. We have some in other places that aren't being utilized to an maximum, so we'll revocate those. And there are probably just two or three of those. So I want to applaud our administration, our leader, uh, here, who, uh, when he started, very much promoted the use of technology, so we'd already required much of that. There won't be a lot of outright expense, so.
That was my question, is like, what, what would we have to have for expense just to get us up to the times? You say a few cameras, light bars, so pretty minor right now. We're pretty much there. Could you?
Yeah, we're pretty much there. I'm not sure what the cost of the round of soundbars was, Mike.
Uh, for this last round of soundbars, it was the best deal that we got. We bought ten of them, and these are high-def cameras. They have soundbars and microphones built into them, and they were about seven sixty per unit, so we paid a little over seven thousand.
Okay.
Um, which was, again, the best deal that we could find. In a couple of months, though, I'm, I'm sure I'll be up here presenting for a upgrade to the Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
How much and whatnot, so.
Yeah, that was the next thing, is, you know, bandwidth and.
Things did mostly for Title V, providing funding for that.
Okay.
I think we're way ahead of a lot of other institutions did.
But that's the future, so we've got, we've got to stay ahead.
Is there any feeling or indication right now of how many you will have in person versus face-to-face or online? Do you have any feeling at all right now?
Um, anecdotally, uh, I think we did very well in the first summer session where all of our standard classes were online. I do notice a marked decline in enrollment in the second session, uh, where we have mostly face-to-face or in-person classes. There might be a number of reasons for that, um, but I think, uh, some students are still fairly cautious. Uh, the fall enrollment, I think it's a little too early to tell, uh, what we may, uh, need to do in my area for those classes that have enrollments of thirty or higher. Uh, we may need to consider moving some of those to an online environment because we don't have classes for social distancing. Uh, the more students we have in a class, the more complicated the Hi-Flex, uh, model is. Uh, we do still have some of the short online classes that are available, uh, that are offered at eight and four-week intervals, and so those might be attractive to students who, uh, need to, uh, study remotely.
Well, there's all sorts of configuration now, as you, as you all know, there's, you know, tables can fit like, you can see like two, two, at most, three. You know, we were talking a little bit about desks. Well, unfortunately, some of, some of our students will not be able to fit in desks, so.
Remember the student desk with the little side arm where you put your nose and?
Not really.
I do, I do. We still have a few of those, and, uh, I, I don't fit comfortably in those, and a number of our students won't either. So we did talk about replacing conference tables with those because we could get more students in a room with social distancing using those. A lot of our tables are back configuration or a four-top, and so you really, even putting two at a table like that is not really practicing those social distancing. Our faculty are, um, also wanting, uh, the shields rather than the masks, uh, for class interactions, not all, but a majority of them. Uh, we're encouraged by our faculty to promote the wearing of masks by students as well. And so we've had a lot of discussions about what happens if a student chooses not to wear a mask, and if it's been a guideline or a rule of that particular course for the syllabus. Uh, then we've, uh, talked with Dr. Roberts, who has quite an extensive student development background, that, uh, this student could be removed from the course for disciplinary misconduct, for instance. And so, uh, it's been a, it's, they've been interesting conversations, and it's been very gratifying, the number of people who are willing to devote ninety minutes to two hours, uh, weekly to, to work these, um, processes and guidelines out, and people are very generous with their time. So, um, we're taking, I, I'm very proud that we're taking a considered, thoughtful, collaborative approach in, in instruction and developing these. And Dr. Tetro and his faculty have been very helpful because they've already implemented some of these processes and procedures in their instruction in May and June, so.
It's, it's a little easier to social distance in a lab and, and a shop.
You've already got the space.
Right, exactly. It's, it's amazing to see the communication that's going on now. Because obviously, we're doing more communication. Ran into Jake today, goes, another meeting. But we, we are communicating a lot better and more, believe it or not, than we ever have before.
Well, Jake, will these football players coming in get tested before they get checked into dorms?
Well, that's part of the meeting with Dr. Trotter Thursday morning to figure out exactly how we're going to do it.
I know down here at, uh, the New Urchin Care thing, they can do the test and have the results really quick.
What's, what's the accuracy now on those tests?
They're about eighteen to twenty percent are false.
Yeah.
So still. Three to four days, it's still a higher, higher percentage.
Ford County is talking to us, talking to Jake about their, they can do those, that can be great in thirty-five minutes. My, my daughter did one last, last Wednesday. It was in thirty-five minutes it was told.
Christie Harshberg, you asked about online enrollment this summer. According to our enrollment report, about twenty-eight percent of our enrollment was online, uh, seven hundred eighty-nine hours of two thousand seven hundred ninety-one.
Christie Harsberg, you asked about online enrollment this summer. According to our enrollment report, about twenty-eight percent of our enrollment was online, uh, seven hundred eighty-nine hours of two thousand seven hundred ninety-one. So far, for fall, it's only about six and a half percent.
Yeah, but that was way up, too.
Partly because we're offering fewer online classes.
We're up, we're up, what, this, this summer session, up twenty percent FTE.
From our.
For a time in a while, yep.
From our meeting with our, uh, last Friday at COVID, we have gone from having a shortage of toilet paper to a shortage of plexiglass.
Yeah, I should have invested in plexiglass.
Yes.
You should have, seriously. That's crazy.
I would like, I would like Jane to let the faculty that meet with her weekly and give that free time when they're not under contract, that I would like to, uh, offer my personal thanks for their willingness to help the institution and help our students.
Yeah, very good.
I really appreciate that, Maya, and I will communicate that in our meeting on Thursday. Um, they really are, uh, donating, if you will, a lot of time.
Absolutely.
A demonstration of the dedication to the college and to our students.
One thing I'm, might bring up, and I may bring Glenn into this, is talk about the communication and all that. Now, and going along with that, I visited with an IHR attorney on, because the CDC, the ADA, the Kansas Dental Association, everything is recommendations. There's no hardcore deal, no, we have things we live by, like do no harm and those kind of things in our, in our stuff, but one of the attorneys, IHR attorneys that I've dealt with said, "You need to document everything you do to show you're trying to meet as many of these recommendations as you can, which will keep you not exempt from a litigation or lawsuit, but you have a lot better chance if a parent or somebody else comes in, or an employee, or, uh, uh, in my case, patients come in and say, 'They didn't do everything they can to protect me.'" And one of the things they said was, because there weren't a lot of accidents, I'm not putting, uh, attorneys in a bad situation, but they weren't chasing around car accidents, so they're looking for ways to use to maybe make some money for themselves or people, possible litigation in this realm there. So, I think we're doing a good job of communication, but I still think we need to maybe, we need to, you know, run that by Glenn or anything like that to make sure that we're following the recommendations to protect ourselves.
But, but I think before that, I mean, you're sending the signal, the information to the, the parents of a prospective student that you are doing everything you possibly can to have them safe, educational.
And I think we are. We just need to make sure that if we ever were to be involved in litigation, we can say, "Look, we did this. We met with this instructor. That person know it." Uh, you know, "They knew it. The kids were asked to wear masks, you know, whether we require them or remove them from school. We were trying to do everything possible to make them safe if they chose not to off-campus or when they weren't guarded twenty-four hours a day. We set all the parameters for them. If they didn't do it, then, you know, our liability will be limited."
That's correct, Glenn.
Okay.
I was on a conference call for Dr. Noki last week, the president, and one of the things that was passed, this past, like, session, was a liability bill. Uh,
Yes.
It discovered, at very, I'd say, wow, at the back of the bill, in, in the definition section, that many colleges were defined as a municipality for purposes of the bill, which helps to limit our liability, so.
Yeah, and we still, nonetheless, we still want to make sure everything's.
I think we're doing that. I just think we need to make sure we're documenting that or, so we know that, uh, we've got something to stand on.
Well, Glenn and his crew have done this outstanding job with our plexiglass. You know, I mean, it's classy looking. I mean, you, you walk in and you don't even kind of notice it, because it's almost, one, one place it looks like a, a, a framed mirror or something like that, if, you know, down, downstairs in admissions. So, congratulations. I mean, I've never seen classy.
Classy, classy.
It looks classy.
Dr. Forky's been very responsive to my pestering requests for more items. See that smile?
[laughing]
He's fighting his lips.
[laughing]
He's looking for more CARES money.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Christie and Jane, I think something that, uh, you know, another habit we're having a tough time, we're seeing our business breaking, is when one of our employees, used to be if they didn't feel good, you know, a little bit good, they still come to work, and we're still having that issue. And, uh, I think somehow we got to drive it home to the students and to the faculty, professors. It's got to keep being poured in, that if you don't feel good, stay home. And, uh, I don't think we can dribble into their heads enough.
That is one of the first guidelines that we did put together, that if you're not feeling well, or for any reason you're under stay-home, please notify your instructor immediately. Now, the next question is, what does the instructor do with that information? Um, the main reason we would like the student to notify the instructor is so that that student then can, can participate in class strictly through Zoom. But we, we do need to have more discussions about, once I know, um, Joey's not well, uh, then what do I do with that information? Because Joey's likely in other classes on campus as well.
So, that was what my next question was going to be, and had to do with, with dorms or, or, uh, student housing. So, where do we stand with that? Do we have the ability to have a section that we can set aside for students that say, "I'm not feeling well," and then therefore they can quarantine there and see, and then we can still, they can still participate in class via online? And so we have that ability to do so?
If we, if we are full, which is three hundred and seventy-five in our housing, because we're close to that.
Three seventy.
We have, how many?
Three seventy.
Three seventy, okay.
Uh, I was rounding, I always really.
Uh, but we also have, we'll also have a, a relationship with, uh, our, some of our hotels and motels, maybe, to be able to use it. Kind of what we did this year with, uh, this summer, you know, but, uh, when we had, uh, the cases coming in. So, we'll work on, we'll work a little bit with that also.
Okay. That would be my next thing, is if we didn't have the capacity, then do we have that, you know, relationship with hotels?
Yes, we do.
Our smallest dorm is fifty-eight beds, um, so we would have to be beyond, what, three twenty-two, um, in the dorms, which I think we're going to be, honestly, when we hit the person's school.
It's good, it's good for full. We need them, they include.
Yes, exactly.
Excellent.
So, I think we're going to have to look into the hotel piece, because we may not be to the three seventy point, but I think we're going to be beyond that three, uh, three twenty-two or three, three twelve, I guess, is what it is. And, uh, we're going to have to look at, at figuring that piece out, because it's going to be pretty important in, in making sure we keep our student, our residentialized students safe.
The right, the biggest concern, you and I were on, on, on the, uh, on the Zoom call, I guess, on Monday morning, was, is what happens if you have to put one student per room? You know, yeah, exactly.
That's.
Yeah.
So. Get to Glenn, we'll put more plexiglass up in the gym.
That was a good recommendation.
That's a, that's a recommendation.
[laughing]
Yeah.
I think that's very real.
Okay. One more question for you. Do we, are we've got a plan where, like, you were talking about a kid's sick, Jim said, not feeling well and sick, and, you know, they're here away from their parents. Do we have, uh, student services, where if they, we needed to go get them tested, we can have that set up, so they have a way they can, say, call them and they'll be able to direct them how we can get them someplace to be tested?
I really think that's where we are in our process of planning, is developing those agendas to pathways, if you will.
Okay.
Well, will, will we be working with faculty to, uh, have a way to make up work that kids miss if they're sick?
Um, it, uh, yeah. And so, uh, even in times of, uh, fairly good public health, uh, faculty do have to address those, those concerns. And so, I think, uh, in the syllabus will include, you know, notify your instructor if you're not feeling well, or if you're under stay-home orders. Um, my question is, if a student is, uh, hope not hospitalized for illness, uh, would we really expect that student to still be attending class? And so, if the student, uh, during a time of COVID, just as in a time of non-COVID, may need to take an incomplete, you know, depending on the, the length of absence. Does that, am I answering your question?
Well, I guess so. I've noticed in the, the nursing thing here that we had, that, uh, if you missed a quiz, you could not make up that quiz unless you were on a DC three trip or something.
And I think that, that's probably a question that Michelle might want to answer when you're discussing the handbooks, because they do have different processes and different standards for progressions in the nursing program. Uh, most of the Gen Ed faculty, uh, would, depending on the situation, um, be flexible on, on the U-Gate.
Yeah, it's tougher on, it will be tougher on Clayton with, you know, I mean, you, you can't weld, you know? You got to actually weld.
You got to be there.
You got to be there.
I'm not trying to throw any more wrenches into it as far as what you're talking about.
Not at all.
These are the conversations we're having. My son was enrolled in, or had been taking a class through Vanderbilt on advanced coding class through his computer stuff. Uh, there were forty-eight people in the class, ten-thousand-dollar tuition for twenty-six weeks. Instructor got sick, and they can't find anybody replacing because of very high standard in the coding area, and they don't have replacements. So, you know, they were at the Zima, do we refund? You know, some people paid their tuition upfront, some people run monthly stuff. Uh, you know, it was a fifteen-hundred-dollar deposit down. You got forty-eight students that are putting in ten thousand. The school didn't want to give up that half a million dollars. Uh, and so, right now, they're on hold and saying that they may have to start the class over again in the fall if this person isn't done, or they can't find anybody else to take over the class. So, I'm looking at worst-case scenario, what do we have, anything that we would do or plans, financial-wise from financial office, or if we lost an instructor to COVID or some other kind of thing that we have a hard time replacing?
Because luckily, we teach Gen Ed. We do not teach those, those kinds of classes. And by online, we're doing a lot, we'll be doing a lot of work online and those kinds of things. We'll find instructors for those classes.
And we'll, we'll find coverage for those classes, too.
Okay. That makes sense, too.
I have, uh, Dr. Tatro a question, too.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how, how's the recruiting going with some area high schools?
So, COVID has very much changed that. Um, we had meetings set up with the different high schools to talk, um, parent meetings, um, parent teacher conferences getting set up that way. That has definitely changed that schedule. Um, I actually have, um, a couple of meetings this next week, um, as some of our outreach schools are working to try to set up those parent meetings. So, I'm, I'm meeting with Dodge City. Um, I have a meeting with them on. I've had, already had one meeting with them on. The, the difference, too, is we've had ongoing conversations, Andrea and I have had ongoing conversations almost weekly, um, with Dodge City High School, and working on getting those students in. So, I would have told you that this first year with Excel and CTE, that I would have guessed it would have been May before we had some of the enrollment finalized. Because of COVID, I think it's probably going to be August. Um, I truly anticipate that we'll have a, a full rush, um, right before classes start.
And we, we signed a whole, I, I found a whole lot of scholarships, and, and a lot of them, almost ninety percent came to be from Dodge City, and most of them had Hispanic last names.
And how are you doing at finding instructors for welding, HVAC, and electrical?
So, we had welding instructors this past week, welding interviews, and we've got two candidates identified there. And then we have electrical and HVAC interviews this week.
Okay, then you are getting some applications there.
Tell them, uh, if, if one, one of our welding instructors' possibility is a female.
She actually, she accepted today, so at my June thirty meeting, I'll be presenting two letters of acceptance for welding.
Okay. That is going well.
I think you'll be impressed.
Great reports. Oh, great. Are you finished?
I am.
Are you?
[laughing]
Like I said, great reports.
Yeah, it was my report, but I kind of ended it up.
Yeah, you did.
Good delegation.
Good delegation.
Good leader, Mike.
All right, well, thank you for preparing this for us, and, you know, it's, it's good for us to see, and, and then I know we were, probably were proposing some adjustments as we go forward and some good things, so, okay. All right. Anything further on reports? Anybody have something else they want to?
Uh, may I?
Andrew, yes.
So, I know that Jim Lewis just mentioned, um, the YNTA weight room equipment. I'm on the YNTA board, and I reached out to the executive director, Jackie Reagan, regarding the equipment and what they were going to be doing. Um, we are going to have a discussion tomorrow because the YNTA is willing to sell the equipment, so I will work with Jake, um, and bring him into the discussion with Jackie Reagan. So, we'll see what happens there.
Christina?
Uh, the only thing that I have, um, that is in your report, um, in your packet, but regarding the, the Heart of Gold Fund, we are moving forward with that. We are merging with the Benevolent Fund here on campus. Dr. Forky and Dr. Forky did ask the foundation to please take that fund over, so we are doing that. Um, I have been in contact with some foundation directors across the state on how they implement those funds at their places of business, which are, you know, they're like student relief funds. So, helping students with tuition-related expenses, maybe some food, maybe, you know, we talked to you last time about possibility of helping with uniforms, uh, within the tech program, things like that. Uh, I've been getting a lot of really good feedback, especially from Cindy Keith, uh, with the foundation at Utes College. She has been absolutely instrumental in getting me some of that information. Um, I have spoken with a couple of members of the previous Benevolent Fund who have agreed to stay on, um, so they're going to help move forward. Uh, I'm getting information from Cindy, uh, through Washburn University Fund, and I'm also in contact with Fort Kate State University, as they've got kind of the same thing going on. And at the same time, uh, Dr. Forky and I have kind of started discussing the possibility of having a comp covered, which will be hopefully housed in the Student Activity Center, but that will help with things like, uh, school supplies, a little bit of food here and there, toiletries, things like that. Fort Kate State actually has one in their library, which I did get to tour firsthand. Um, it's all free for students, um, and it's done by donation, which we're going to be ramping that up as well to get that relief fund going. Um, so currently, I am working with the college to get the current relief fund, uh, turned over to the foundation. That is done through payroll, but, um, we're also going to expand that out to extra donors if they so choose. And so, we actually have little lapel pins that we'll be giving out, uh, to people who donate to that Heart of Gold Fund, so I'm pretty excited about that new, uh, information on that. Uh, the golf tournament is on schedule, uh, but we are taking some precautions with that. We'll be purchasing that. We'll have, uh, hand sanitizer there. There is a social distancing policy through Mariah Hills. We've been working with Chris Robinson there, uh, to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. I, I spoke with Justin today over in, uh, transportation, so we can kind of work out what we're going to do there as far as how we're going to do registration, maybe utilize the, uh, that big tech bus that we have. Uh, so we're excited about that, and then of course I'll talk about the auction a little bit later.
And by, by the way, if you go to a hotel and you get those little things sewed or whatever, donate those to.
Yes, we'll, we will take them.
Okay, I'll mention what I talked to you about earlier, okay?
[laughing]
Look, look at your smile. You know?
Don't want to know.
When I, when I was, when I was a child, you know, you get, you get a towel and take it home with you, you know, from the hotel. You'll do that more than.
Just so the public knows, I didn't do that. I brought the shampoo home.
Do you have any positives or negatives we need to know about on the financial side of things?
The county, uh, how long do I say this? I was expecting seven hundred thousand dollars more from the county than I received.
Oh. Is that just delayed action there?
Uh, that's supposedly.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
I was hoping that we'd, we'd get it before June thirty, that would make our, you know, financial.
Looks a little better.
Cash flow, yes, yeah.
Right. Did they say just a delay of what's in their order?
Yeah.
Yes, load, load up, come in, pay their taxes. Yes, yes.
Uh, and I'll save some of the other, uh, information for the budget report that I'll do next. We, uh, we didn't want to combine the report just because of the potential length of the meeting being extended, and, and so, uh, you know, I, I know it's last late. I know my budget presentation will be entertaining again, uh, but we still didn't want to make the meeting longer than necessary tonight.
Hopefully, by then, the county has coughed up some money, and if he knows back on, maybe we'll get a few more tax dollars in from him.
Yep.
But there's a lot to be discovered about really what's going to happen, that and state budgets and all that, so.
We'll discuss that more.
We'll discuss that more.
That's right.
Okay, that, uh, kind of concludes the reports. So, that was really good. So, let's move on to action items, and first off is the approval of the twenty and twenty-twenty-one calendar.
Can we do something old-fashioned? Move, move Mary Trent.
Well, no, I'm okay.
She's right next. I thought we'd just hammer that out. I thought about moving that forward for her benefit, but I thought it wouldn't take as long. I, you know, chair for our approval. If anybody has, if you have any.
Remember during Christmas, like I did, did one of those.
Any, any conflicts, if you, but I will ask if. Any, any conflicts, if you, but I will ask if, if, uh, you study this and then you have conflicts, call me, email me or, or present it at next board meeting and we'll try to, to adjust. But if not, I will entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the meeting agenda as proposed.
So, move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Dr. Forky and Mary, we'll move on to insurance.
All right. The colleges use Fee Insurance Group and Mary Trent, uh, for a number of years again.
Can you guys hear? People online? Nope. Maya's shaking her head. We're moving a microphone.
How about now?
Can you hear now?
Now, great, okay. The colleges use Mary Trent and Fee Insurance Group for a number of years. And, uh, she's been meeting, uh, with me on the insurance for the college. Uh, we met today and after she left, I was reminded of a story. Uh, Moses had led the children of Israel out of the land of Egypt and they were getting ready to go into the promised land. Moses sent twelve spies and they came back and Joshua and Caleb gave a good report. However, there were ten spies that gave a bad report. Matter of fact, I think the King James Version calls it an evil report. Uh, so, I will let you decide after Mary presents, uh, which category that falls into.
Wow.
Oh, boy.
And that would have for y'all to be a blackjack when I walked in.
But you didn't know your presentation was gonna be biblical.
It might be.
Flag, type, ramification?
Yeah.
So, I think that in your packet, you have the information for the renewal of the general liability, the in-lin marine, um, the work comp, all the, all the big things that we take care of at this time of year with the exception of the property. And really, those numbers aren't so bad. Um, it's up about nine percent from last year. That is relatively low compared to what we're seeing for increases in insurance right now. Um, there's a lot of lines that we're seeing increases in the fifty percent range. So, while eight point eight is a substantial chunk of money, um, I felt pretty good about that part of it. If you have questions about that part, I'd be happy to answer those questions and then let you either move forward with approving it or not and then we'll talk about the property.
Okay. Okay.
Your, your liability limits have remained the same, um, the, the terms and conditions in those coverages have remained the same, your deductibles, that kind of thing. Um, most of that eight point eight percent came out of your umbrella and a good part of the increase that we're seeing in both umbrellas and professional lines right now is a direct result of COVID. Um, insurance companies are seeing that they are becoming involved in situations they had no intention of being involved in. Most policies contain specific exclusions for communicable diseases, viruses, on and on and on. Um, but as Kelly mentioned earlier, the, the attorneys weren't making as much money chasing the cars and so, they found these people that were feeling hardship from COVID and, and I'm not demeaning that a bit because there's a lot of it out there. Um, but some suits have come about that just should not have happened. And while there's no coverage for them, they probably won't ever be paid, the insurance companies are still defending their clients for these situations. And many times, even prior to COVID, we spend more money defending our clients than we do paying their claim because it, it just is what it is. So, that's why we've seen the, the cost for umbrellas and for professional liability go up substantially because typically, they just don't get involved. You don't see those claims. Um, when you see a claim, it doesn't exceed your primary limits and get into your umbrella. There's a lot of that going on right now. So, the overwhelming majority of the increase that you saw is in those two lines. We did some shopping and there's definitely nothing that we could find out there that was a better offer.
Did we see an increase last year in the student, sorry, I'm referencing.
Last year, we saw an increase in the property primarily, they were pretty stable last year.
All right. Okay. Any questions here? Okay.
Can you, uh, Jim, can you hear me okay?
Yes. We lost your video, though. Uh-oh, we lost your audio, Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't have your audio. Stop, stop coming through, Jim.
Tim meeting dinner, but, um, anyway, uh, my question, and I, my question is, and I'm sorry, I can't seem to find, no, I'm sorry. Okay. Any better?
Yes.
Okay.
No. This is, he's, there he is. Ah-ha. We, you got a nice thumb there, Jim.
Yeah, thumbs up, yeah.
A frozen thumb. No audio. Why don't you, why don't you just go to? Why, why don't you just go to audio and shut off your video 'cause we really don't see you anyway? Okay, do you, do you have an audio, Jim? You're muted now. There you are. Do you have audio at least? Do you have the bandwidth for us? There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Quick question was, I can't see, are we buying this insurance? Local agent?
Yes. Yes.
Second question is, it concerns me that our liability would keep going up when we reduce the number of employees by over a hundred people.
Okay, so, I, I think I know where he's going. So, yes, you have.
Most of your liability is quoted, uh, you had a year ago, make sure they understand.
Okay, I, and I think that where you're headed is that you have less people, so, you think that the liability premium should be less. And under normal circumstances, I would agree with that. Um, but we have had a couple of claims, substantial claims under the professional liability part of your coverage and that's somewhat driving that cost there. And the umbrella really has very little to do with the number of employees you have. It has more to do with how many students you have.
Oh, really? That surprised. Just potential.
Yeah, me too, that surprised you, but very good.
Just potential litigation, I guess.
Okay, but, okay, Dr. Forky's saying to me, enrollment's going down and, and we could adjust those numbers downward, but we carried forward what we've done this last year. So, if we see that enrollment's gonna drop through the floor, I can see if I can get some of that adjusted.
Hopefully, that.
I'm talking about what it was this last year with our enrollment was down in, in nineteen-twenty. We don't, you know, as far as twenty, it's twenty-one, I, you know, maybe flat. That's, I mean, that's what I'm basing the budget on.
Okay, well, they have not audited for nineteen-twenty. So, they'll pick up that reduction and if we knew what that looked like, I can bring that forward into the renewal.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Jim, are you still able to hear?
Yes. Very good.
All right.
Yep.
Mary, my, my concern is.
And I got one more thing.
I think it'll go down, I think it'll go up because, you know, people, I, I hear people in the community now, you know, their kids were gonna go somewhere else, go off to college, you know, to Duke, Yale, Harvard or whatever, I don't know. But now, or K-State or KU or whatever, and now financially, people are really getting strapped because of that, which causes the community colleges to grow during times like this.
You know, based upon the things that I've seen, I would totally agree with you. I think you might see enrollment explode, especially if you can accommodate the, the online version of it, the Zoom thing, you know, so that if, if we have it get worse again and, and you really don't wanna be out in public and still go to school without ever living home. Um, but we've certainly seen that the bigger colleges are feeling the pain.
They are, they really are.
Feeling that they are.
And, and you know, luckily, this school was took, was intelligent enough not to get into the culinary arts. I mean, I would hate to be in the culinary arts right now in the area of, of the country or purpose or having courses like that, you know, welding and HVAC, uh, you know, all those kinds of things. There's, I mean, housing right now is booming.
The things that you have to have. You don't have to eat out. We all miss it.
Right.
We were glad when it opened up, but you don't have to be able to do that. You do have to be able to have a roof over your head, your car run, those kind of things.
Exactly.
Jim, you had another question?
Yeah, my, my question or just a point that a lot of people miss is we give a lot of vacation days at the college, a lot of paid vacation, which should not go against work comp. But if you don't go over with that auditor and pull that out of your payroll, they're gonna charge you work comp on it. So, just maybe you're on top of it, but I've never seen an auditor ask you to pull your vacation payout.
I think that Christie's very good at that and this year, there's another line item that we're gonna wanna look at really closely and that is in quotes, COVID payroll. So, when we send everybody home and they're still on the payroll, but they're not working, if we can identify that payroll, a change from N C C I this year allows you to exclude that payroll.
Which we did.
So, I think that's the key.
Plus, we applied all the hours under COVID, thank you.
Jim, you have that. Did you hear, Jim?
Uh, you taught me some, you taught me something or gave me an idea tonight and I appreciate it.
And Jim, just so you know, too, we do an annual audit, several annual audits with Mary and she's laughing 'cause they're really fun. But part of what we do is taking out that vacation and there's a, there's a whole breakdown with everybody's hours and classification, especially with slides, we break out the slide hours versus the ground hours and.
We've kind of, I think I can safely say that we have pounded the work comp audit situation here all the way to the ground.
So, do you take into account for more online students that aren't physically on campus and take those out?
No. No. Because you, well, I don't think insurance has quite got to that point, okay? I'm, I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you.
Vacation people out and if we, uh, increase our online enrollment thirty percent and we decrease students on campus thirty percent, there should be an adjustment there.
I absolutely hear you because we have a conversation about why does online classes cost more than, than in-person classes because you have no bricks and mortar to maintain with an online and I will bring that up to the underwriter for you, certainly go there.
But you know, just like everything else, things are changing so quick.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, you get paid unemployment by the state right now because it's broken, you know, so, or parts of it aren't. But I think things are changing so much and so, we've got to, you know, we've got to move with it or we're, or we're out of, out of luck.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so, I'm done with that part.
Okay. Property?
Um, I'd rather you made a motion first.
Are you on?
She run this meeting and you're like that.
She runs meetings. It's biblical.
I'm sorry. We could go on if you liked.
No, no, you, uh, you wanna take it in two steps? Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, the comprehensive insurance renewal?
I move.
Okay, there's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All right, do I have any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
What?
This is Jim.
Jim, is that a?
Nay.
Jim, is that a nay?
No, I said aye.
You said aye, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, got it. All right, Mary.
Perk or stop?
Nope.
Property.
Property, property.
So, here's the biblical proportions. A little background for everybody that hasn't been here for, forever. Um, until two thousand and seventeen, July of two thousand and seventeen, the college was insured with E M C Insurance Companies and E M C had a program specifically put together for community colleges and they include the insured community colleges across the Midwest. Um, when the concealed carry laws changed in sixteen and then came into effect in seventeen, E M C elected to exit the community college marketplace. Right before they exited the market, we had a million-dollar roof claim, hail claim, um, here at the college where we replaced all of the roofs. Um, then, we had the, the ice storm where we burned up a chiller to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take some change. And then, in two thousand and eighteen, at Christmas time, when the students left the dormitories, we had a shower that was left running on hot and I can tell you for a fact that your hot water situation here is fantastic. Um, it took, the, the kids left before Christmas. Right after Christmas, they called me and they said, you need to come see me. Come, come, let's come to the college. Um, a shower had run on hot all that time. The moisture on the floor was in the nineties. The mold on the walls looked like Dalmatian puppies. It was bad. A seventy-six thousand dollar claim to clean up the mold and the water damage from the shower running. So, in two thousand and seventeen in July, we moved from E M C with the property to, uh, the Midwest Higher Education Coalition. They are a captive insurance and they operate in twenty-two states. They have lots of members in small groups. Dodge City Community College is, uh, part of Group Two for the state of Kansas and that includes seven other community colleges, basically our size. Well, that is a little bit smaller, but the rest of them are pretty much the same size college that we have. We saw the property premium drop from a hundred and eight thousand dollars down to sixty-six thousand dollars with the move. It went up a little bit yesterday, or last year, um, to a hundred and ten when they increased your wind and hail deductible from twenty-five thousand to three hundred thousand per occurrence. So, anytime we had a wind and hail claim, the first three hundred thousand dollars was on the college and we did see a rate increase last year. They told us in February of this year that we would see no change in terms, but we would see a rate increase. Property rates have been on the move, still, you can certainly chime in here. Uh, property rates have been on the move since probably two thousand and seventeen, the late part of it and they just kept moving, the end part of two thousand and nineteen, they definitely started moving. They told us in February, there would be no change in terms or rates. When we didn't have something from them by the middle part of May, we started pushing, 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 where's our numbers? We need to get out to our colleges. We finally got an email back that said, we're working on it and we'll get something to you by the sixteenth of June and you need to tell us if you wanna go ahead by the nineteenth of June. Okay. We did get the rates late in the evening, um, on the sixteenth. We did get the rates late in the evening, um, on the sixteenth, and, not that you all care, but I haven't slept much since then. The rates weren't so bad, comparatively speaking, as that the terms did change, and now, instead of having a three hundred thousand dollar per occurrence deductible, you have a three hundred thousand dollar deductible per building.
Oh my God.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, he lives in college.
All the buildings are worth three hundred thousand.
Just like one big roof. A three hundred thousand dollar deductible per building, subject to a maximum of two point five million dollars in any one claim. I went back to him, and I said, I don't know what colleges you've been insuring, but how do you think they're gonna take care of that? Money's tight to begin with, and you're going to do this? And they were like, this isn't even firm yet, Mary, we're still negotiating. I said, I don't like the rate increase, but I can't live with the deductible. I, I, how, how would you pay that? Since last Thursday, everyone in my office, both here in Dodge, and in Wichita, and in Hutchinson, and the agents that are involved in those other six schools, we have pounded the ground. And the answer is, because of the claims that we have in the last five years, I can't find a solution. This is that biblical moment, isn't it?
And Mary, I will remind you, the ten spies did not get to go into the promiscuous.
Thanks.
Wow. I feel absolutely, I mean, we've chuckled about Dr. Forgy, and, but I feel absolutely horrible to be here tonight to share this, this information. And the reason why we're not going to finish this conversation tonight is that I have hope for one more thing. Um, I did have a broker in Texas that told me that he thought maybe he could find us some reinsurance to get the deductible down to a flat thousand doll, a hundred, let me try again, a flat million dollars. I said, a million dollars is still a lot of money. He said to me, it's less than two point five.
It is, that's the math.
I can tell you that K. Yeah, well, not that this helps, but I can tell you that KU and K-State are part of this group, and because of the issues that they've had in the last two years, their deductible per building was five hundred thousand, and their per loss aggregate was five million. Um, everybody's looking, everybody's looking. There doesn't seem to be anything there. If we can get past the storm claims that we had in two thousand and seventeen, it will be better, but we're two years from there.
I was blaming this on COVID. And if we could give some relief that way, pay for it.
PP hears that. Cares that.
What it boils down to, the way it stands right now, is that you basically have no wind and hail coverage unless we have a tornado. Um, like I said, we put new roofs on everything in two thousand and seventeen, and the bill was a million dollars, give or take some change. And there's inflation since then and everything, but I still think we could probably put a new roof back on everything today in the one-one range, the one-two range, and by the time we get past this claim that's causing us the pain, still under a million and a
It's like this everywhere.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a battle.
I can't tell you how many phone calls we've made, how many hundreds of emails we have flying all over the country, and everybody's like, yep, that's what it is. So tell me what you'd like me, like I said, I ha, I think that before the board meeting next Tuesday, that I might have an option to get the deductible down to a flat million dollars. So that's an improvement, but what's it gonna cost?
Definitely gonna save.
Okay, well. It's not, no, we're just having a conversation at this point, so you can kind of take it in, think about it. Um, both Dr. Nolte and Dr. Forgy have my email address, they have my phone. I'd be happy to talk to any one of you, email back and forth with you, but we're on a real short string to begin with, and, and I just didn't feel like it was fair to go any further without telling you what was happening.
I'd like to know with that. Now, that's what we gotta guard against, this tornado, which doesn't cover. Yeah, we had eighty and seventy-two mile an hour winds go through the other day. It snapped one of the street sign poles out going up my street, so it just broke it off. So, I mean, you can get a lot of damage with seventy, eighty mile an hour winds. They're a straight line that aren't considered tornadoes, so that can cause a lot of roof damage.
Dr. Forgy, do we have a, a million dollars in, uh, capital outlay to pay for that deductible?
We had to. Uh, in reserves, uh, uh, the way that we normally prepare our, uh, published budget, for which we are authorized to spend, uh, we would be able to do that, sure. And, and we probably have sufficient res, reserves within, you know, we had a pretty good year last year, we put our, I think, around a million dollars in, in reserves last year. So we, you know, we could survive that.
So, so we could have that in the budget in reserves there?
I wouldn't necessarily budget it, but it's in, but it's authorized, okay? I know we're, we're talking a little bit different here, but we have an operating budget. This will be a, a, a non-operating expenditure, it wouldn't be nor be an unbudgeted, unusual, extraordinary item.
Right, so I'm saying, we could have some money set aside, so we could self-insure for a period of a couple of years, until we get these other claims off, and then hopefully renegotiate.
It would be a, it, kind of an internal budget adjustment, not a published budget.
I understand, just as long as we have a.
You, you don't wanna have to go back out and republish your budget.
Just as long as.
That would be a cap, that would be capital outlay. You might remember last year, I said, that our budget, our published budget is always a little bit higher, this is kind of for purposes like that, or if we get a big, great care of money, you know, stuff like that, we get money in.
As long as we have a contingency for, for that, and we can do that for, carries through until we get to your period.
I absolutely feel your pain. I know that that kinda money isn't just laying in the bank account, I know it.
What do we get for cares this year, so far?
Uh, we have drawn down, I think it was three hundred and eight thousand dollars, I'm talking about the institutional portion, not what we give to the students, the institutional portion, three hundred and eight, maybe it's three hundred and four thousand, for, uh, reimbursement to the college for refunds that we had to make.
For student tuition.
Uh, tuition and housing, yes, housing.
Right, that's why, so for housing to be cool, and all those kinda things.
Okay, I just wanna throw a couple more numbers at ya, and then I'll quit glazing you over. Um, when we look at your, your package policy over the five years, you paid a total of one million, one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, and they paid two million, four hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, which is a two hundred and eleven percent loss ratio. If we look at just the property over that same timeframe, you paid five hundred and one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars in premium, and they paid one point two four one million dollars in claims.
Two point one four, one point two.
Two point four one. So basically, for every dollar you paid in on property insurance, you got back two and a half. You know, we all live within our means, our budgets, we know what money we have to spend, and, and how we're gonna spend it, and insurance has just come to the point that they will not be a maintenance program anymore. There's too many people out there that defer their maintenance on their house, on their business, on their farm, on whatever, and then wait until the hailstorm rolls through, and lets them take care of it. And that was not the situation here, but overall, it's a problem, and so, to some extent, that's driving the rates. You, you, insurance companies are not nonprofit.
One thing you haven't mentioned yet is the anticipated rate increase. I think you quoted me, you thought about sixty percent. So, if we were at a hundred thousand dollars this year in premium, our insurance premiums next year would increase by sixty thousand dollars.
Yes, this is kind of the double whammy. They want more money, and they gave you less coverage. I can tell you that of the seven colleges, three of them did not have claim issues. Three of them did not have claim issues, and we found something for them that amounted to about a twenty-two, twenty-three percent increase over what they paid last year.
With no claims. Evil report.
Yeah, it qualifies. But like I said, I, you have questions, you have thoughts, you have ideas, get in touch with me.
We appreciate your work on this, and have for years. You've done, you've done an amazing job for this college, 'cause I know that you're interested in this community, and always have been.
It doesn't feel like it.
I know.
This is, in, in, in forty years, this is probably the off list thing I've ever done.
It don't feel so good, check it home. Is there, is there, is there like a national chair, like with other, other, other states or other schools, to get, kinda like, you know, like this, is there anything that you can look at that says, look, we've, we've been able to do this, we've been able to do that?
Well, we've talked, and, and they're still screaming. I mean, we called lots of, lots of agents that insure colleges and, and community colleges around the state and outside the state, everybody said it is just the same. No matter where you are right now, it is just the same. So if we can carry over, like, one point two million, not carry over, but have, have it, then for the next two years, what are you saying our rate might? Okay, so for this year, we know what it looks like, and it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, okay? I, I, I wouldn't even wanna guess what it's gonna look like next year, okay? But if we can buy that deductible down to a flat million dollars, and get through these next two years, and if, if you look at the matrix of storms right here, the theory would be, we might be able to make it. Um, once, since I started doing this, we had two storms in one summer. Everybody just about had a new roof on when it hailed again. Um, we had three years in a row where we hailed the roof off. But since then, we've kinda settled into four, five, six years, it just, it just depends, and we might get through, but that's a lot of, that's a lot of maybe.
Lot of yes.
A lot of maybe.
Okay, I have a question, with us looking at acquiring some more property, now, we would, would we be required in our lease stuff, we would be required for those roofs, those additional buildings, right? So we don't wanna buy anything else, we just wanna make sure we're leasing, somebody else will plan them.
Right.
More roofs at this point wouldn't be a plus.
No, I'm saying, make, make sure you remember that, if we're trying to acquire.
We're trying to get rid of one of Ken's leases.
Okay, so, like I said, Dr. Forgy, Dr. Nolte will, if you wanna get in touch with me, he'll, they'll be able to point you my way. Unfortunately, you'll have to see me again next Tuesday night.
We're looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Good job, Mary.
Thank you.
You do what, Mary, we'll.
You do what you do, thank you.
We'll be careful not to shoot the messenger.
Yep, right, that's right.
Uh, with that, I can't handle any more than that. Let's take a quick five minute break.
You still need to do the workers' comp.
Oh, was it not part of the?
That was tripping.
No, it's two separate items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, let's go ahead, you, well, you, we've covered that mostly in the discussion, so you, you had.
Your comp is basically flat.
Actually, down.
It's down, so let's go ahead and discuss that.
Um, your mod went up one point? Your experience mod went up one point, and your premium went down, I don't have it in front of me, Dr. Forgy, do you have?
Three point eight percent.
Three point eight percent.
That's down?
Woo!
Hey, alright. Gotta, gotta do a short break with that one out.
They saved about two thousand dollars.
Whee! Well, that was a good one. You know where we're going.
Oh, I know where you're going. Yeah, I'll, I'm, I'm, okay, so do I have a motion to approve the workers' comp? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, it carried. So let's do, let's take a quick five minute pause right now, we'll take session again in about, uh, seven minutes till. All right, next action item, Record Policy Six Twenty-Eight. So, Dr. Forgy?
Uh, this is, uh, the policy to update our, uh, driver's policy on when we take cars out for the test, and, uh, use of college vehicles.
Okay, so last month, we had the first read, this is our second read, and, and, so this month, if anybody can see anything on Policy Six Twenty-Eight that they wish to change versus the old policy. Uh, there are no objections to the new policy as drafted, I would entertain a motion to approve Policy Six Twenty-Eight.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Maya?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I got a second from Maya, the first was from Mr. Curly. My second, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, we will move on. Item E has been, uh, been tabled for a bit, so item F, call, the Cosmetology Curriculum.
Our Cosmetology Program has been operating under a very traditional curriculum. Uh, you can see on the curriculum sheet, the Cosmetology One, Two, Three, and Four, eleven credit hours each, forty-four credit hours total. That works very well for full-time students, that does not work very well for part-time students. So our proposed curriculum, um, has already gone through our curriculum committee here at the college. Basically, would break it out into the requirements that are used by the Kansas Board of Cosmetology, would be much more, more reflective of the skills and knowledge that the students are actually receiving, and would also give us a lot more flexibility in terms of repeatable credit to accommodate both part-time and full-time students.
Okay, well, great, and explain it to, 'cause the credit hours are the same, you're splitting it out this way, but that's, that was how it was covered in Cosmo One, Two, Three, Four, so I don't understand the difference.
Right, okay, so right now, Cosmetology One is an eleven credit hour block, Two is eleven credit hours, Three, et cetera. So what we're proposing would be, scientific concepts would be three credit hours, but it could be basically divided over three different semesters.
Okay.
So One, One, and One. Physical services would get divided for, Four, and Four, um, et cetera. So by doing it repeatable credit, it, it allows for it to fit better in terms of part-time students.
I follow, I agree, okay. Thanks for pointing this very student-friendly for the part-time, I can see that. Okay, all right.
What time do classes start over there?
In terms of Cosmetology?
A day, uh-huh.
Right now, eight-thirty.
And how, how will that affect high school students? Are high school students gonna be able to?
They'll, they'll be able to get here and get. They'll, they'll be able to get here and get settled and get in before classes start, correct?
Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve the cosmetology curriculum?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, we'll move on to the proposed CDL curriculum.
Our current CDL program really only consists of one course, a two-credit hour course in test preparation, defensive driving. Theoretically, that course could be covered in thirty-five to forty contact hours. The way we have the program designed right now, it's about a hundred and fifty contact hours. So we're really literally not giving ourselves credit for the work that we're doing. Um, that credit comes into play a couple of different ways. One, in terms of student tuition, and we have the opportunity to actually, um, make ourselves a little bit more competitive compared to other full-service programs. Um, but also it allows us then to look at, um, excel in CTE dollars, those pieces that way. So really what we're trying to do is build coursework around our current design that is actually reflective of what we're currently teaching rather than essentially what's on the book.
And that's still the, the, what I'm going to call the short haul program?
Right, we're about a hundred and fifty credit hours, or a hundred and fifty contact hours. Where you look at like a Seward County or a Washburn Tech and they're about two hundred and forty hours.
Okay, okay. So, all right, do I have a motion to approve the CDL curriculum that's presented?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Kelly? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Item I, which would be the ABE Burlington English License.
Burlington, Burlington English is a very popular software program, was in adult basic education across the nation, um, for both ESL and GED programs. Um, we have used Burlington English the last two years at our adult learning center. We have dollars available at the end of our grant year. And so this is a large purchase that is acceptable and allowable through our adult basic education grant. So it would allow us to set ourselves up for success for the coming year.
So this amount's kind of consistent with previous years?
Yes. This, this will be essentially an, an annual purchase. Um, I hope that we'll be able to do the same thing next year.
Okay. Any other questions on this? So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
All right. Bill, can I count yours as a second?
Yes.
Okay, Bill. Dan made the motion, Bill seconded. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, now we'll ma, move on to the Department of Nursing and their approval of their handbook. So Michelle?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear you good.
So I'm here tonight to present our, uh, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, uh, nursing student handbook. It has every year, for those of you that don't know, every year our department gets together even with students. And we review the entire handbook, revise things as we need to. And then revise it, send it for a Google review, and then bring it to the board for approval. Trustee Rackenborn, I know you, uh, had a comment about the quizzes. One thing I wanted to, um, say is that we are going to be making some COVID attendance provisions. We don't know exactly what those are going to be. But I, I will report back regarding that because we don't know how, what the classroom's going to look like, especially in our new space for the fall. We're hoping to get in there by August the 12th. And there is space there for us to even be able to divide the classroom, have students in two different classrooms, and then we video conference. We also have the option of zooming along with, uh, live in the classroom, just like, uh, Dr. Huarda said. So we don't know for sure exactly what those are going to be, but we know that we will be making some COVID provisions for that as well.
But, uh, I had a little difficulty, and I may be the only one, of going through this much material every year. And I'm wondering if we could, and try to compare it with last year. I'm wondering if when we make, when we do the revision next year, maybe the first eight or ten pages or where would say, these are the changes we made. They're on page, uh, eighty-five or whatever, and paragraph three. And if we would have that at the front and then we could say, okay, it was this and now it's this. Waiting through, and really if this was in, in, uh, anything except very small print, it would be two hundred and fifty pages. It is a lot, you know? Especially for old people with old eyes, it's very small print. So if we could do that maybe next year, if there's going to be a change, if we could start with the few pages and say we changed this, uh, on, it was this on page eighty-nine and now it's this.
Absolutely.
Is that possible for you to do?
Absolutely, we can definitely do that.
All right.
Thank you.
For the students, on the first day of school in the fall, I literally go over this handbook with them, almost line by line, so that they understand what's new, what's the same, and so, and they understand it as well. But for next year, I definitely can do that as well.
Okay, that, that's a, a good, you know, suggestion from Dan. But what I'm going to ask you to do tonight is just to highlight some of the revisions made in the, this year's handbook versus, uh, last year's.
Absolutely. So, uh, there weren't very many at all, actually. Um, of course, the schedule change updates. We did add a, um, so last year we had several students, we recorded some of our check-offs so that then faculty can watch those check-offs during, to, to grade them. And then we go back to the student and pull that video up and show them, you know, you did well here and, you know, we had problems here. But we, last year we had students taking up four and five slots in the signup sheets to keep doing it over and over and over. And we had other students that only had one opportunity to record them. So we just put in there that, you know, unless there's something wrong with the actual video, that you only get a couple of chances. That way we're not spending three weeks recording these videos over and over and over. The others were basically the, um, basically saying that if we have to move to an alternative format, like we did this semester, um, that some items may change depending on the requirements, uh, of the state and local governments. The quiz thing was there from before. And then, uh, uniform updates, because we were able to offer them more affordable uniform choices based on their own budget. So there's like three different choices, and so this year we were able to do that for them. And so that was a, a new update. But other than that, they were pretty, and I updated the regulatory appendices with the newest information. But other than that, it was pretty much the same.
So if you go throughout the year and you're making some changes, alterations based on the COVID issue, are you, then are you going to, uh, update us on, on those changes to the handbook?
Yes, sir.
You've had quite a challenge getting your practices in, haven't you, with these students?
We have, um, uh, we have worked so incredibly hard to get them all done. We made sure our senior students actually graduated on time so that they could take their NCLEX and go to work. That was really important to us. And luckily, where we were in the semester, they didn't have as very many hours left to do. And so we were able, along with, um, Kansas State Board of Nursing allowed us to use virtual simulation and virtual clinicals to finish those out. So we were able to do that with our level. No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I want to thank you for going the extra mile to make those clinicals possible for those students, because I know you worked hard to do it and, uh, I know, I know you did it for their benefit, so I appreciate that a lot.
Absolutely.
Michelle, do you think that, uh, the state standards boards will come out with some different standards for you with COVID for this next year?
I think, um, so the Kansas State Board of Nursing is actually already working on this even before COVID was even a thing. But I do think that they may put in more provisions later. Some of the biggest provisions, um, was for the certified nurse's aid and the medication aid. For the first time in what anyone can remember, they allowed us to do simulation clinicals with the CNAs and CMAs to finish up our spring classes and to do our summer classes. Because most of those clinicals are in the long-term care environment and they, they're not allowing us in for understood reasons. So possibly changes to regulatory there for sure. And then for our, our level one, we issued incompletes and then just finished their clinicals on campus starting on June eighth. And that actually went very well.
I talked to one of your students, she said it was going very well, so I appreciate that.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, I'm glad to hear that. Everybody was actually very excited to get back on campus and get back to some kind of normal. So, including our students and our staff and faculty, so.
All right.
I just want to say, I, I have a new time board member not seeing this yet. I did read every page of this as a medical personality, and it took a long time. I think I wore out two pair of readers doing it. But it was very thorough and very complete, and it was nice to know that we're covering every detail, uh, clear down to consent, sawn bloodborne passages and everything that we are, are required to do and stuff on that. I will be very glad that Dan's recommendation has taken heed to and next year.
I make a motion to approve. All right, I have a motion to approve the twenty, twenty and twenty twenty-one, uh, handbook. So do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curly, second? Okay, any further discussion or questions for Michelle while we have her here?
I just want the public to know the level of your grading scale. Because I don't think the state, like, when most of us went to school, the nineties were As, eighties, Bs. Now if you get a, a seventy-eight point zero percent, you're on a C. So we have a very high standard for our nursing students, and I appreciate that with you.
Well, if anybody in the public wants to see what our nursing program is doing, they should get this. And read it through, because there's a lot of detail there and I think you're doing a fine job.
Thank you.
Okay, so I still have a motion and a second on the floor, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Doctor, oh, Doctor Hayley.
Doctor Hayley, that's right. Doctor Haley.
Thank you.
Okay. So next up, item K, the foundation auction event request, so Christina?
Can you all hear me? Okay. So before you is the same type of, um, action item that we have requested for the last two years. Two, is for some of you that are new, two years ago, the board changed policy to allow alcohol on campus for special events, but it has to come with Board of Trustee approval. And for the last two years, the trustees have been gracious enough to give us that approval. Um, we are looking at having our auction on November the fourteenth as of today. That could change, obviously, we don't know how that's going to go. Uh, to let you know, to kind of, um, preempt that a little bit, um, our plan right now is to have the auction as normal, in person, in the dome, as we have the, the last couple of years. But we are exploring the possibility of doing kind of a hybrid auction where we have an online portion and maybe we limit the number of people that are in the building. Um, and if it comes down to it and something happens with COVID in the fall, um, we are looking at the possibility of canceling that entirely. However, the executive, and obviously that's a scholarship funding for the college and for the foundation. But the foundation executive council has gone back and we have gone through our financials, and we still think that we are going to be able to help out the, the college with scholarships regardless of whether we have this event or not. Um, because we had the forethought enough to kind of keep the funding from last year's event. And so that's still there for us to be able to push that forward to the college if that is something that we need to do. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding this particular request?
I think it's good that we get the virtual online stuff there, because there's a lot of times, you know, you plan ahead and you say, oh, I want to go to the auction, and it was people that was actually spend money, but if they're not there, they can't. And so if they had it up and they could pull up their computer and, and they pre-registered with the credit card or something, they could bid on items, I think that will only do nothing but enhance the possibility of raising more money.
Yeah, and that's something we're looking into. I know Garden City Community College, their endowment association auction is this weekend, they are doing the hybrid. Uh, that community college actually did theirs entirely online because theirs was right in the middle of the COVID. They did see a dip in the amount of funding that they received, but it was not as much as they were expecting to, to dip. So, you know, I think that's something that I'd really like to look into. Uh, we are, yeah, the, doing the, doing the hybrid thing was very intriguing to me. I found this out that Garden City was doing that last week, so I'm excited to kind of explore that.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, people spend more money when they have a drink.
Okay, well, I, I think we should extend it to basketball.
I'll be happy to bring that.
I was going to say, that is an odd, I need approval on that one.
Board makes decisions, you just go by.
Uh-huh, yes, okay.
Well, you know, I'm not going off Chris's deal, but for Jacob's, I think that's a discussion we use later on with the roundhouse. We could do special booths or something up there, you know, like they do in some colleges and, and stuff, that would be a possibility. Might raise some rev, uh, the revenue there, bring some more people out.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about doing that, especially in the VIP lounge.
Well, I, that's why I said, you know, halfway joking, but I think it's something that we ought to discuss on select games, that you have the place where you can separate and keep it out, but that's a whole nother subject. But I do think it, it bears the discussion, I'm open to it at least. So anyway.
Yep.
Um, I do have a motion, did I have a second? I lost track.
Absolutely.
Any further discussions? Well, if I get sidetracked. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope by November, everything, the dust settles and we can have a great event.
I hope, yeah, I hope so.
You guys did a fabulous job.
Thank you, thank you. Last year was highly successful. We're hoping that we can hit that same goal this year, but honestly, with everything that's going on, not expecting it, I'll be very, very surprised and very happy if we get to that goal.
What was your goal last year?
A hundred thousand. We almost made it. We didn't quite, uh, we did in revenue, but once we put the expenses in, that kind of chalked us down quite a bit. But we were still able to donate more to the college, um, for scholarships. Um, about twenty-five thousand dollars more than the entire revenue, um, from twenty fifteen's auction, so.
You were ninety-three thousand, weren't you?
We were about ninety-three thousand, um, twenty fifteen's auction, um, yielded only about twenty-five thousand. So, yeah, we kind of exploded last year. If you know of any sponsors, I'd really like to meet with them. Yeah, we are.
So we'll move on to, um, on, let's, uh, Dan, you've brought some things forward. Um, the first one's, uh, had to do mostly with advertising. um, the first ones had to do mostly with advertising, do you want to take all those uh, ones as one?
Yes.
Okay, that was two through, where else, I'm gonna look back in my notes. New business, yes. Yes, new business.
Okay.
Well, you, do you want to do new business first?
It's listed, it doesn't-
No, 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 I'm gonna, she pulled, he pulled, pulled that out, and I was gonna put it, bring it up, and then go into new business.
Okay.
But I do new business first.
I just had a few questions, uh, about, really, is, uh, you know, I've kind of added up what we spent on those different, uh, entities where we, advertising and so on, and comes up to almost eighty thousand dollars, and I just had a few questions, one is, have we done a follow-up with students to find out where they heard about it, I mean, are they, would somebody say, I heard about you by listening to Rocky M. Radio, or?
So, actually, Dan, um, I pulled a survey today that I talked to Lance about, about doing, doing a survey like that. Uh, so, no, I do not know our return of investment on radio, TV, um, you know, the Daily Globe, I really don't know how much we're getting from the Globe. Um, the one place where I would like to spend money is a newer contract, it's with Gardner Design on a digital marketing, uh, platform, and I think that's where the students are going to find, find Dodge City Community College. So what we're trying to do is, when people type in colleges, we want Dodge City in this area to pop up number one.
Okay.
So last year, we did a short, a, a smaller condensed contract with Gardner, and with a digital marketing platform, and we had, we saw a really good increase in the short amount of time. So, so if I start backwards, let me start with Gardner Design, we are wanting to do a more comprehensive, inclusive plan, uh, really promoting our spring enrollment and our fall enrollment, so it takes three months in the fall, three months in the spring, right before our enrollment, really focus on our service area schools. That's where I'd really like to focus this year, to start off enrollment, is our service area schools. So really going in, and you can geo-fence and target, like, if we know that our admission threats are going to go into Ulysses, we can put up barriers to make sure that those kids keep seeing Dodge City Community College over and over. Uh, as far as our radio spots, um, I would like to say that Lance has really taken a hold of our radio spots. We also now are going to have, uh, spots in Spanish on both of the radio stations, the Southwind and Rocky M. Media, um, currently, do you know how many radio spots we have going?
Uh, currently, we have one Spanish spot, and we have three rotating on the English station.
Once we get going, though, back into school, we have some generic, uh, enrollment, uh, radio spots, and then we do more specific, if there's a, a concert, or if there's, we did an athletic one, like a generic one, uh, to go-to-go conks. So, at one time, I think we have like five or six rotating.
Seven.
Seven at one time rotating. So, we're really excited to, uh, head towards the Hispanic radio station as well, and actually both of the radio stations, they have somebody that translates our radio spots. So, we're excited about that partnership. Um, another area where we don't really have to pay a lot of money, but it's, um, with Pablo and the informative Hispanic paper, where there's an article in English, and then it's translated in Spanish, are you familiar with that paper? He pulls, he's a graduate of, um, DC Three, and he pulls some articles, and, um, and then he translates them, so we're in that area as well. Uh, our commercials, um, we were set to have our commercial crew method, uh, come back out in the spring, and that was canceled because of the COVID, but we are looking at having, um, another commercial fully produced in fall. But, what we did, Lance and I, we sort of talked a little bit, I want something fresh, to keep everything updated and fresh, we met with Method, um, and they are going to pull some of the, it's called B-roll, some of the extra footage that wasn't used in our first commercial, and put together another commercial, a fresher commercial, just to keep our message going. So, we really have a connection with Gardner Design, Method, which is in Garden, uh, and they do our commercials in Wichita, what did I say, no, I'm sorry, in Wichita. As a coincidence, there's a relative at Gardner and Method commercials, they're able to connect and use some of our branding, and put it with the commercial, and vice versa with the digital marketing. So, we really are playing our cards right there. Um, then with the commercials, I'm gonna probably have to end up, I would like to spend a little bit more next year, but we can have a couple of commercials running, rotating all the time, but it's gonna cost us a little bit more money to do that. Uh, but I really feel, I'm very confident that, um, all of our media outlets, all of our contracts that we're using are really supporting Dodge City Community College, and they're really seeing what we are trying to do with branding, and marketing, and enrollment, and recruiting, um, and athletics, so I really feel we have a good, a good base. So, yes, the number seems a lot, but, once we narrow down a survey, I'm going to be talking about that tomorrow at my team meeting, we want to figure out how do we get that survey out, um, and what do we do with results, when we get them back. So, once I get the results back, I will be more than happy to share it with, with the Board.
Talk to them about the virtual high, which, you and Glenn were working with the high school to do the virtual tour.
So, we reached out, so a virtual tour is like, we, we need to have one, we do not have one. Um, I know a lot of the coaches, they were around this spring, and did their own Facebook Live, did their own, uh, virtual tour, I know Caitlin with softball, she put together her own, uh, virtual tour, um, Sherry Curris helped, took some footage, so we have different people across campus trying to help finish recruiting, um, so, we reached out to one company, and virtual tours can be very expensive, depending on how detailed you want it to be. Uh, so the first quote we received, um, it was a fifty-eight thousand dollar quote for the virtual tour, and Dr. Ford, he was like, um, no. So, we go to Plan B, so.
That's a lot, by the way.
So, and I just said, okay, uh, so he has connections with someone at the high school, Chris Stindler, who is, does the graphics or does videoing. So, um, I assigned Lance the lovely task of reaching out and meeting with the high school, Chris Stindler, so he did, um, they only would like for the college to donate a piece of equipment, and then to be recognized on our website, or wherever we post the virtual tour. So, they are going to come out and do a free, like a demonstration.
Demonstration, our dome.
Yes, a demonstration of the dome, and then hopefully we'll go there. Here's, here's the caveat, though, we're talking using high school students, and they are only available in the evening on weekends, so this is not going to be something that is going to be done in two or three weeks. So it's going to be quite a process, and then orchestrating what has to happen, and then somebody from our campus, you know, on the committee needs to be there to walk them through it, so it's quite a process, do, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so, I think it, it could be a good place to start.
It's a good place to start.
Good place to start.
So, we're, we're really, and-
And I like the engagement with the cycle.
Yep.
So we will see, um, I mean, how that, how this all happens, and how long it takes and the commitment, I'm just worried that we're gonna get in the middle of this, and then all of a sudden, something's going to hap, happen with the COVID, and then nobody's able to come out, or to finish it, or to edit it, or, so it, so that's where we are with that. Is anything else you'd like me, do you guys have any questions for our contracts, or, um, what's happening in the world of enrollment, and?
Less money to the Dodge City Daily Globe, and more money to-
Well, exactly.
They sent my, we have, we have five papers, we've been doing that for thirty-two years, a Globe, send them out there, I'm the deal, even the adults now never pick up the papers, they're always on their phone, getting all their information on their phone, so we get those companies, that they're doing the right kind of coding, then anytime they pull up, maybe looking at a class, like nursing or something like that, that should all automatically pop up, Dodge City Community College, like nursing, uh, the schools and anything like that, that's where it's all coming from right now.
And I would like to share that we did cut our Globe contract in half, so we, we just had to, um, we are still gonna get the ad placement put in there, we submit stories, but to be truthfully honest, when we submit a story, we never know how the story's going to come out in the paper, um, and I'm just being honest, uh, a lot of times, they will take the story that Lance writes, and they will go in and change it, or tweak it, or mumble jumble it all up. So, um, I'm not happy about that, but I guess that's how the newspaper world goes. Uh, so, other questions, Dan?
Gardner Design is a Wichita.
Yes, they're Wichita, they did our website redesign, um, they're, uh, they've helped us with our logos, they now are helping, um, with our, our third-party developer that they use for digital marketing.
So we talked about insurance, uh, I was gonna try to talk to Glenn, and then do a, a sign, a sign that we have out there on, on fourteen, one on fifty, but, uh, I don't know.
I think that's going into insurance.
When it's that, well. No, that's all, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, no problem.
Andrea, Lance, I, I like you getting out there, and, and getting your, we've got to get our message out there, but to Dan's point, I think we, we, we have to do some analysis of which, uh, you know, methods or media are you, are working.
Right, well, and it's funny, because I pulled up, uh, an article, and, you know, it said, where do kids, most kids get their information, and it was, um, the first one was Instagram.
Instagram.
Instagram, and the second one was Facebook. Down in the bottom was Twitter, like, they were low, like five percent, and that really shocked me, because I feel that that's where kids go, is to Twitter. So it's just really interesting, just seeing the data that comes across. Uh, but just TikTok, no, we're not gonna start doing TikTok.
Why not?
Oh.
Put the comp down, no, you know, the whole thing is TikTok.
So, I think you just won the game.
Christie will be your model.
Uh, I'm just, no, a lot of dirt happening in that.
Right, okay. Uh, then, Dan, you pulled out, uh, five items and personnel, do you want to hand them one by one, or all together?
Uh, I just had a few questions about some of, and, and a few comments, maybe, uh, we've, we've hired the coaches on the A two, number two, spring coaches appointments, uh, do we know, I just talked to you about during the break, do we know which way, is anybody talking about what's gonna happen, not only this fall, but spring, and how will they know, and how do we, I mean, it's, it's just a guess, isn't it, really?
Yeah, I would, I would say so, at this point, the NJCA has said, we are wanting to move forward, they're, however, they're, uh, they've put some, as, as Kelly was talking about earlier, they put a lot of recommendations out there, uh, not requirements, um, and so, they have recommended, uh, some guidelines that we follow, however, they have also said that they very want, very much want to leave it in the, um, re, the hands of the regions, because they don't want somebody in New York making decisions for somebody in Kansas on how to move forward playing games, um, or not move forward playing games. Uh, at this point, um, we are in a lot of discussions, uh, one of the things, one of the major changes that was made with NJCA basketball, is they moved the start date up, because so many schools have moved to finishing their face-to-face piece, um, by Thanksgiving, and so, they moved the start date up for basketball, to allow for schools to be able to get their first semester playing dates done by Thanksgiving. We have a, an Athletic Directors Conference call tomorrow, uh, to talk specifically about adjustment of the basketball schedule, um, so we're going to have that scheduled. So, our region has, um, definitely made it a priority to try to move forward with sports, um, I think that there's a, there are a few reasons with that, I think one, main one being, a lot of our region schools rely on their athletic programs for enrollment pieces.
And housing.
And, and, yeah, and housing, and so it's very important to our, the schools in our region to have those things, I think the, probably the biggest exception to that would be Johnson County, um, it, but, um, you know, they don't, they don't have on-campus housing, they don't need the enrollment from their athletic department, um, so, but, that's one school out of twenty-one in our region, and so, we've made a, uh, so far, the, the region, the leader, region leadership, the Athletic Directors within the region have made it a priority to try to move forward with the schedule, um, as we look at it, we all know that the risk that we're going to be looking at, and we all understand the importance of, uh, reporting, um, supervising, making sure that we're monitoring on a daily basis, um, and if we do have a positive case, we have a, uh, we're talking about having a, um, we feel like we, obviously, ethically, you have a duty to report that to other schools that you may have been in contact with, um, but also, we're talking about making that some mandatory stuff, but ethically, I think most of the Athletic Directors in our conference feel pretty strongly about that, that, you know, we are going to move forward. Uh, some of the, uh, things we've put in place, before you get on the bus, taking temperatures, uh, before you ever get on the bus to travel, um, if you have somebody who is over that one hundred point four, they're, they don't get on the bus to go, they stay, um, you know, things like that. I, I don't think that anything we're talking about is foolproof, uh, I'm not, you know, foolish enough to think that, but at the same time, I think we're doing everything we can, uh, with our athletic leadership, to make sure that we're putting policies in place, putting prac, more, I should say practices, not policies, but putting practices in place to safeguard the students the best we can, but, uh, if you're asking me to sit here and tell you that, yeah, a hundred percent, we're gonna compete all the way through the year, I'm, I'm, I don't feel like I can do that.
Have they talked about shortening the season, any of the season stuff?
We actually did, that was what, that was the call that Dr. Nolte and I were on Monday morning, um, we have reduced, uh, the games by ten percent, um, maximal allowable games have been reduced by ten percent across the board.
Was it nine, and now they're seven, or something like that, football?
Football, um, actually, football allowed eleven games and two scrimmages, um, some people, it basically took away a game or a scrimmage, um, basketball, you dropped a, a scrimmage and three games, baseball was two fall games and six spring games, um, things like that, so, we did reduce by ten percent across the board, um, and it was all sports, so we, we have taken some measures, um, the, at this point, the NJCA has not moved any championship dates, at this point, they are keeping the championship dates in place, um, so, the only, uh, the only major adjustment they made for, was for winter sports, and that was to accommodate the, uh, the schools, uh, finishing by Thanksgiving, and they've made a, once again, a recommendation, that, uh, you don't compete between November twenty-fifth and January one, um, but it is not a requirement, but, we're going to meet as conference Athletic Directors, and talk about some of that, and moving, the moving of our basketball schedule to meet that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And we have some, we have some sports, some, some states that are quarantined, you have, like, the, the foreign country of Alabama.
Right now, the KDHC is still requiring quarantine from four states, and, and then any international, Arizona, Alabama, Arkansas, Maryland, and then any international.
On, uh, item four, is, uh, the admission representative, is that a new position?
No, sir.
Okay.
It is to replace Melanie Chelsey, who, uh, resigned last month.
Okay, and the Director of the Adult Learning Center, uh, that person has been an employee, Ms. Rohoff, right, and is this just a new position for her, is she moving up?
Yeah, so Brandy Ferguson has been the Director of our Adult Learning Center for years, um, and she resigned a few months ago, and some, um, we did have several in, we knew that there were several internal candidates that would be interested, um, so we did go ahead and post the position, and have interviews, so we did interview three internal candidates.
Okay.
And Maria was the committee.
And this will be a increase in salary for her, and an increase in duties, I guess?
Yes, it will, and it is grant funded.
Uh, uh, how much, is it all grant funded?
Um, actually, if you look up the percentage, um, yes, it is, it is, out of those two grants on her appointment.
Okay, then on, uh, let's see here, number, uh, six, I guess, assistant football coach, uh, I think I just had one question, uh, just a bit of a glass, I can't find the right page. Is that, uh, is that a replacement coach, somebody that's- Is that, is that a replacement coach, somebody that's, that quit? And was that for the, the, is that the person who had the experience as a backfield coach or receiver coach? We lost a defensive.
Oh, sure. So, we lost the defensive coordinator, yes. And actually, we are advertising for that position hopefully soon.
Okay, so, this isn't that?
That is, this is-
This person is not gonna take that position.
No.
This person said was a running back coach and-
Yes, yes, this is back on the offensive side.
Okay, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then the director of the Student Achievement Resource Center, that's, that's the same person, right?
Yes, so-
It's just, it's a move up. It's added additional duties, isn't it?
Uh, it, it isn't, it isn't, he's kind of doing a lot of them already. He's already been teamed up with Title V to oversee that. And my understanding, which I was Dr. Warda discussing as well, my understanding, a lot of the technology and a lot of the grant objectives in Title V, they benefit the Student Achievement Resource Center, and so, she's kind of combining those two. And actually, the grant is gonna offset thirty-two percent of his salary-
Okay.
-on the appointment. If you look at the appointment, it, where it says account number, if it has a one-dash-ten, that's gonna be our general fund, but anything that says one-dash-forty, that means that's gonna be grant funded.
Okay.
And so, if you, I break down the percentages on the appointment, you can see exactly how-
I see that on the second page. I was gonna ask what, how much of was grant funded, but I do see that there now.
Yeah, no, that's, and those are our new budget numbers, so it's, it's a good topic to discuss anyways, the one-dash-fourty grant.
All right. Well, I think that's-
I don't know, I can ask if they didn't do it ahead of time. Are we gonna replace the assistant rodeo coach this term?
That has not yet been determined.
I didn't know if we're just budgeting wise or what we read on that.
I think that's all the questions I had on that.
Okay. Okay, so, there's been a number of items that was pulled out of consent to our action items, and I would entertain a motion to approve those consent items.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. And, and that builds a second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Okay. Now, let's move to new business, and there were three, first reads, the first read of three policies. So, Christie?
So, in front of you is, just got some updates to the free vacation policy. So, we have three that are broken down by the subgroups of these people as far as the year will consent, so whether they're classified and hourly, whether they're program technical, which generally means salaries, or they are absent. So, I'm like, coaches, I apologize, coaches. So, the first one is the hourly classified. So, this is the one that I did the most kind of, just adjusting and making, updating is the word I use, the most updating. So, basically, what had happened is, a little while ago, when they went to a different timekeeping system, 'cause up until about 2017, the college was actually still doing timekeeping on paper. And since they went to their first electronic timekeeping system, which is time clock plus, which we will now be getting rid of when we go to ADP, because it has a lot of limitations, and ADP is just gonna be a lot better. Because of limitations, the procedures were changed in the payroll department that actually did match policies. And so, we needed to make the adjustments, we needed to make sure we're following policy, and also to update the policy to match what ADP is gonna be able to do. And honestly, the biggest change is going to be, rather than, what they did when they went to time clock plus, was they changed that accrual rollover day run, so I want June thirty with our fiscal year. Previously, and how the policy read was that it should have gone off the date of employment. And what has kind of happened is, now we have all these employees who may in June are rushing to use all of their vacation days before they lose them, and so, we're understaffed and we have a skeleton crew. And so, by going off that date of employment, if Charlie is, you know, rushing in May versus Kim, who's rushing in February, you're still able to staff your department. That's probably like the biggest change. Other than that, I just did some adjustments to the way it calculated, this point specific. I made it an hourly rate rather than just the day rate. And I did a couple of procedural things, like the policy said that we would track a certain amount in your first two weeks or something of that sort, and that's just not actually possible to track. So, I kind of eliminated some of those things. But, anybody, nobody's accrular changes, none of the rollovers are being affected. If anybody is affected by this, their date of employment, if it takes them back a year in service with their accrual rate, we're gonna, we'll manually, Cindy and I will just move them and we'll grandfather them in. We don't want anybody losing any vacation day or any seniority with this policy change. So, that's, this one has the most change.
When, when I first came here, I don't know what happened, but you had a lot of staff that were very upset that lost a lot of vacation days. Something happened.
It was when they went from state of employment to then July one to June thirty, is my understanding. So, then it changed their year of service, and then if they didn't accrue those, they just didn't get them back. And there were a lot of disgruntled employees about that, understandable.
Well, the, the vacation is extremely generous. I mean, a coach works one year and gets basically a month off. A paid vacation.
You're talking like thirty-one point three?
Yes. And then, uh, an administrator works one year and gets more than a month off. And they can, they can keep some of those, they can carry over fifteen days. So, if they were here ten years, you know, they, they basically have eight months of paid vacation coming. You know, and they're already getting two, if they took two, only two weeks of paid vacation a year, bank those other fifteen days each year.
Dan, I, I don't think, I, I don't think that they can accrue more than fifteen days. They can't make, bank the fifteen days year in and year in and year in. It's a total of fifteen days, is what I've been-
It doesn't say that.
You're correct, trustee.
It says, it says per benefit year.
Okay, well, and that would be a great takeaway for me to adjust that provision, because what trustee pluralized that is correct.
Okay, well, yeah, I'd like to see it's not that per benefit year out. And to carry over fifteen days is a lot different than carrying over fifteen days per year. So, isn't it?
Well, you know, when I first got here, in the summertime, everybody was off on Fridays. It's off day.
We've been told that we don't have-
Every day was off.
We don't have any employees that take off for a whole month or anything of that sort. We don't have anybody.
What, what you're saying is that if, if they haven't used your vacation, they can carry over fifteen. If they have twenty, they lose it, so it's a five.
That is correct. And that's after, that is after several years of employment.
Well, and it says, it says for classified, all vacation days must be used prior to the end of the benefit year.
Correct.
No days carried over.
Correct. That's the difference between the hourly versus the program technical or the coaches. So, the hourly employees, the reason they don't have any necessary rollover is because they also accrue comp time as well, and so, that comp time also acts as vacation time. And so, if you are allowing them to roll over in addition to having comp time, they actually end up with more than everything else.
Okay. Well, I, I understand now, and I'm, I-
Yeah.
I wanna clarify that language, that they can't carry over fifteen days per year.
Yeah.
So, it accumulates so much that-
I'll put together a couple of different ones in our-
These are, these are very generous vacations. It, it's very generous on vacation, I think.
Uh, maybe on the June thirtieth, Dr. Forgy, have they finished their CACLO, the data book, if that completed yet? In the, in the CACLO data book, they do a really good job. They pull, all of the community colleges in the state of Kansas, they pull together all of their benefit packages, and so, we can literally compare apples to apples. And so, I'll, I'll bring that for you because we are not nearly as centered as some others. We have a very nice friendship of the package and vacation days, which is why we're a really great employer to work for, but there's some others that have quite a bit more.
And something, something that Glenn and I've talked about is that sixty days per single, that's another, another issue with, for faculty.
Well, it hasn't, nobody has abused it. That acts as our maternity and our maternity leave. But, it is another big number.
It has the latitude to have to have it.
Glad to know.
Okay. So, that was first reading for those policies. We'll, next month, we'll, we'll have a second reading and then go from there. So, now, we're back to consent agenda, and do I have approval of the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
We're done. We, we, no, we didn't.
Yes, she did, they're part of this.
I approved the agenda, but I didn't approve the consent agenda.
Approved the items that were taken out of the consent.
I, I approved the items taken out of the consent.
Yeah.
But, I've not, have not called for a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Because earlier, I approved the agenda so we can start that meeting. Okay? So, everyone's in a phase clear?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? All right. We will now, we have two executive sessions, and so, we'll move into executive session one. Does anybody would like to have a break before we start? Okay, seeing none? Mr. Kirch?
Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss the process relating to the contract. The new attorney, the vice president, the college attorney, and the college attorney should be included in this location at nine P.M. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, vice president, and human resources director, and the vice attorney.
That is the version. Do I have?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve, second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, opposed, same sign? We are now in executive session until nine P.M. All right, we're now back in regular session. There was no action taken in executive session. We do need to go into our executive session number two. So, Mr. Kirch, take us into executive session.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss employee assignments pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exceptions to Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one. The open meeting to resume in this location at nine twelve P.M. In addition to the trustees, the president, vice president, and Forgy, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? We are now in executive session until nine twelve. Okay, now, we're back in regular session. There was no action taken. Uh, so, but we do need to extend our time in executive session by approximately five minutes, so I'll have attorney take us back into executive session for five additional minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss employee assignments pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exceptions to Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one. The open meeting to resume in this location at nine twenty-one P.M. In addition to the trustees, the president, vice president, and Forgy, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Kathy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, we are now in executive session. Okay. We are now back in regular session. There was no action taken in our executive session, which that concludes our agenda for today. So, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and thanks for sticking with us in the three hours excursion in board exercise. Board exercise.